Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, March 13th, and it's seven o'clock. Would the Secretary please call roll?
Commissioner Carmichael.
Here.
Commissioner Sharp.
Here.
Commissioner Van Buren is here. Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Bartel.
Here.
Commissioner Lavoy.
Here.
And Chairman Pill.
We have a quorum. Having a quorum, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before you sit down, I'd like to swear in everyone who is going to either come up to the podium and speak either for or against an item. Even if you're not sure, it's a very simple procedure, just a simple "I do," if you'd raise your right hand. Do you swear that your testimony tonight will be truthful, so help your God?
Yes.
Thank you. Consider yourselves sworn in. And the next thing I would like is everyone to silence any cell phones, or pagers, or anything that could go off during the meeting. Sir, could I swear you in right away, please? If you'd raise your right hand, do you swear that your testimony tonight will be truthful, so help your God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, everyone, for being here. We're going to go over just a couple of ground rules here tonight. When you do approach the speaking area, and all speaking needs to be done at the podium. We are televised and recorded. I know if you weren't here, you'd be home watching this, because it's such great fun. So you'll need to go up and sign in. Those of you who signed in either outside or already here, you've completed that. Everyone else will need to sign in when they approach the podium. All right. Our first order of business today is the approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled meeting on February 13th. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, second by Commissioner Carmichael. Discussion, comments on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
And Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Chairman Pill?
Yes. All righty. Minutes of the February 13th meeting are approved. Is there anyone who is here tonight to speak on any item that is not on our agenda? Okay. Hearing none, we will continue. And we're going to start with a review of the public hearing procedures. This will just take a few seconds. I will introduce each item on the agenda in the order they're listed. I want to make two comments for that. First of all, our third item on the agenda tonight, planning and zoning 1-9-0-0-7, Lauren Wall at 401 Whipple Lane for the fence variance. That has been withdrawn, so if you're here tonight for that one, you get to go home and watch the Blackhawks game. So that one's out. Secondly, I am going to call for a motion after I've gone through the directions, and I'm going to flip the two items. So we'll be starting with planning and zoning item 0-0-6, the Eagle Creek Apartment, and we will be following that up then with 301-315 West Ogden Avenue. So after I introduce each item, I'll then open up the public hearing. We'll invite the presenting team or individuals to present the agenda item explaining their item, addressing any findings of fact or hardships as relevant. There's an overhead projector for all diagrams, as we do have a TV audience at home. There's also a computer up there if you have a PowerPoint presentation. I'll then turn to staff for comments. We'll ask anyone from the public who would like to speak on this. I will give everyone a chance to speak. The applicant may address some of those concerns as I see fit throughout the talking. As far as the applicants, I would ask, though, that if someone has just said the same thing you're going to say, that you sort of summarize it in a shorter form, so that we don't hear the same thing over and over again. So I'd like to have some individuality, if you will, to the comments. After that, we'll then have, each commissioner will then offer their comments and question either the applicant or the staff. There'll be a discussion amongst the commissioners. After that discussion, I will close the public hearing. At the conclusion of the discussion, I'll call for a motion and a second on each item with a final discussion. And after that, we will vote on each item as it's presented on the agenda. After the vote, no matter which way it goes, and we are a recommending body only, so the village board will have the final disposition on all of these items, but we are the public hearing arm of the village board. So everything you say tonight will be recorded in the minutes. It will be forwarded onto the village board, and many of them will either be watching it live tonight or watching it as it's recorded and shown on a weekly basis on the local access. I'll then instruct the applicant on what the next steps are. So that's our basic flow here tonight. And so the first order of business, I will entertain a motion to revise the agenda and begin with planning and zoning item 1-9-0-0-6. Do I have a motion?
Still move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bartel, second by Commissioner Sharp. Comments or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill?
Yes. Thank you. We will now begin with new business, planning and zoning item 1-9-0-0-6. Request from Laura Schwartz of Hanson Landscaping on behalf of Eagle Creek Apartments regarding property located at 1128 South Williams Street in Westmont for the following. A, a landscape plan for proposed site and landscape revisions. Good evening.
Good evening. There's a typo. It should read Phil Rousch with Hanson Landscape. Laura's here, but I'm the presenter.
Thank you, Phil.
So I'm a representative for Marquette Management Company, who's a property owner with Hanson Landscape, we're the contractor, that design and proposing site amenities for the apartment complex, basically providing entertainment areas for the residents. There are several areas, I believe five separate areas. First one is furnish and install outdoor amenities at two pool areas for the purpose of outdoor grilling and entertainment. We're going to be removing existing standalone grills and concrete patios at those sites. Amenities are to include paver patio, grill station with built-in gas grill, and landscape planting improvements. Second location is furnish and install outdoor amenities at common areas west of building 1128, again for the purpose of outdoor grilling and entertainment. Remove existing standalone grills, or single grill, and concrete patio. Amenities are to include paver patio, grill station with built-in gas grill, and landscape planting improvements. Third item is install irrigation around monuments sign along 63rd Street to irrigate turf and summer annuals. Fourth item is furnish and install paver path west of building 1020 at area where turf is damaged due to high traffic and compaction. And lastly, furnish and install landscape improvements, softscapes at Clubhouse slash Leasing Center.
Great. Do you have any pictures of these that you could put on the overhead?
I did not bring any with me. I can provide them for the commission tomorrow if you'd like.
Do you want to reference this, or we have some of this information?
Okay.
That's helpful?
Yeah, okay. Oh, okay, perfect.
So the first two you discussed were what we've been given here in our packet as the south and the north pool?
Yes, correct.
Okay, I got you.
And that location here, these two spots here that I'm primating?
Yes.
Are the pool. These are the two pool plans. These areas here, the brown, those are like a little pool house. They store items, maintenance materials, things like that. So it's going to be simple shrub planting, perennials around the outside of the pool. The patio areas with a single grill station. The grill stations are going to be made out of stone, similar to like a retaining wall block, very decorative, and then a stainless steel barbecue grill. They are gas. We would be running gas line from the buildings. They've got a manual gas shut-off, as well as this grill has a timer shut-off. So if anybody steps away from the grill for a period of time, I believe it's an hour, maybe an hour and a half, it automatically shuts down. So there is a big safety concern, so that really solves that situation. We've used these grills at many of the other locations. We've done for Marquette, and Marquette basically buys them for us. They use this grill at many of the other locations around the country.
And which is the one that's going in where you mentioned the compacted soil?
I didn't do a plan of this. The location of that is back here. And what's happening, people, these are entrances to buildings here, and people walk around the back of the building. There's, it narrows down to about four feet wide, so it gets compacted, and in this area, bluegrass turf does not take the compaction very well. So we can aerate, we can till it and reseed it, it gets beat to death. So our solution was just to put a simple paver path. It's approximately 70 feet long, about three feet wide. It'll be easy maintenance for them, and they're not going to be walking through mud.
Got you. Great. Okay. I will turn to staff. Any comments or?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, we have reviewed the petitioner's plans. We've noted in the report that this project is a part of a previously approved plan development back in 2004, and although that's important, and any significant change to a plan development would require your review, but more importantly, we had determined early on that because of the size of the area of disturbance on this property, it also required a site plan review by the commission. We have asked our outside landscape consultant, Gary Weber and Associates, to review the proposed changes. They have made a few minor comments with regard to some plant materials, nothing substantive in our opinion that could not be addressed, you know, at the time that the petitioner seeks the building permit. So at this point, we are recommending the approval of the project if you believe that this is consistent with the overall project objectives.
Great. Thank you. John, any comments?
No, thank you.
All righty, great. Is there anyone in the audience tonight from the public who would like to speak on this particular subject? Seeing none, I will then move to Commissioner Van Buren as our first commissioner to speak and ask questions.
I looked over the landscape plan, and I think it looks very good, and as long as it meets all the requirements of the planting materials and so on. My question is, is the retention area, if you want to call it that, along 61st Street, within the jurisdiction of this?
63rd.
No, no, 61st.
On the west.
Is that within the jurisdiction of the proprietor here? Because that's, it's supposedly retention. It's about an inch deep, and there's debris in it, and it looks terrible, and I'm sure it doesn't do much more than collect mosquitoes. Is there anything in there?
I don't think what we're doing is going to impact that. Everything on this property is set up several feet higher than that.
Right.
So even if the water does come up quite a bit?
Oh, I don't think it's a danger at all.
No. And I don't think anything is going to, you know, we're going to be, the only thing that would move in a heavy rain would be the decorative mulch, which, it's a hardwood mulch. It's from the hardwood trees in this area. It's a bark, so it's organic. So it's not going to contaminate anything.
No, you don't get my point. My point is that as far as landscaping is concerned, and if this is the property of the same proprietor?
Yes.
That area is terrible. I mean, it looks terrible, and it's always the same. And I would think that if that is within their jurisdiction, and that this would be something that would have been included. As far as the plan of what you're doing, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, this is the scope of our work. I suppose if you all wanted to request that from the management company or the owner to address that, you know, we can probably do something, just, again, to make it nicer for the surrounding areas, because it's a weedy isore.
That's my point. I don't have anything else.
Commissioner Thomas?
Would that be something that staff would approach the property owner about all his concerns, about the appearance?
Well, two thoughts. First, we'd have to determine if that detention basin is on their property or not.
That's what I'm trying.
Unfortunately, I don't know if it is.
Do you know the answer to that question by any chance?
I'm going to look at this survey real quick, briefly, just to see if I can get a confirmation from you.
I'm sorry, you're up, Bruce. Go ahead.
If it is on their property, then as part of this discussion, the village could say that some additional landscaping would be required or suggested. If it's not on their property, probably not.
I believe the area you're mentioning is this, there's no area in here that's pretty weedy. So this is the outline of the property line, which stays pretty tight to the building. So I think majority of that pond area, retention areas, is not on Marquette's property, Eagle Creek's property.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Other than that, I support your presentation, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Sharp?
I just had one question on the pool layouts. The, could you bring that up on the screen? The white, long rectangles that are coming off the catty-corner ends of each plan, are those sidewalks?
These here, yes.
Yeah.
Just in concrete sidewalk.
My only comment, just since you're redoing all of this, it would be nice to make that grill area more accessible to wheelchairs or people in walkers.
Okay.
Accessible. So maybe change, it would be nice to change maybe the steppers from the sidewalk to the patio to something more hard surface?
Yeah, we can continue the brick pavers all the way to the sidewalk.
I think that would be a good thing to.
Okay.
But other than that, I have no other questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Bartel?
My only question was whether or not there was compliance with the recommendations from Gary Weber and Associates, and it sounds like that has been done. So I really don't have any other questions, and very supportive.
Okay.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Could you put the site plan back of the survey with the highlighted areas? It looks like this survey, the fine print, anyway, I'm getting old with the, it looks like the date on it is back in 2017.
Correct.
And it shows on this plan that the limits of the floodway, limits of the floodplain, and limits of Zone X, which is also a designated area for flooding. And it looks like your shaded box area is almost all-inclusive within the floodplain area, very near the floodway area.
And? Saying this one down here?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So those lines on the plan indicate that you're pretty close to the flow. The floodway indicates the main conveyance of that system. And I'm concerned about any kind of obstruction, not necessarily a mitigating factor, you know, as far as floodplain mitigation, but doing what we're doing there could impede the flow and redirect water. So I would like to, you know, direct staff to maybe take a look at that as you go through the permitting process.
Sure.
Because it looks like that, even that path that goes around the corner of that building, right at the pinch point, also encroaches the floodplain. So if there's any filling, you're going to have to mitigate that, probably at a one-and-a-half-to-one basis.
Yes.
What fill you're going to do. So I want to make sure that you're aware of that, and also over on the building along Williams is the same case, where you are actually doing all the work within the floodplain.
Mm-hmm.
So I can't tell by the, there's no grades on the plan.
Correct.
And then also, there's no date on the floodplain cert on that drawing of what map was used.
Okay.
I don't know by the information given if the floodplain information that's shown here is accurate or not, because the date of the floodplain isn't shown. So I just want to, you know, let Bruce take care of those couple of things for clarifications, and other than that, I don't have any comment. Oh, I have one other one, one other question, and that is that it looks like that box, the same box down in the lower right on the screen, also encroaches the sanitary sewer easement. So you're putting improvements over top of a sewer. Is that, is that utility and exclusive easement or not?
I think it is utility and drainage easement. I don't know how Westmont is, other communities I've worked in, brick pavers are considered, if you want to call it this, temporary, whereas like a concrete patio, poured concrete or asphalt would be a permanent structure. So I've been able to do the similar work in similar situations within the easements, because it was considered temporary. So if utilities have to come in and dig or address that area, it's easily removed, and it would be at the owner's expense.
And that's why I bring it up, because I want to make sure that the owner would know that if Westmont has to go in that easement and repair that utility?
Certainly.
They have a right to do so.
Oh, yes.
And whatever improvement is in there, it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
They're going to go in and fix what they need to fix.
Yeah.
And maybe that, Bruce, you can address that issue with staff comments going back, but other than that, now I'm done.
I can address those items right now with you if you want to hear some answers.
Sure.
Okay. Around the clubhouse landscaping up in this area, the original landscaping when they built the clubhouse was pretty minimal. So the extent of our landscaping that we're proposing is quite a bit nicer. So the only addition as far as, say, turf removal and extended up beds are this area outside the sidewalk and around this utility box. The rest of the planting inside the sidewalk, between the sidewalk and the building and the sidewalk and the curb, those are existing planting beds. So we're just, you know, removing the old undesired plant material and just refreshing and giving it a better look.
Totally understand. The improvements, I totally get.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that, you know, we cover those particular areas. The owner knows that he's working over an easement.
Yes.
And that we may not have current floodplain information on the map, and that's a staff issue.
Yeah.
So other than that, I mean, yeah, I mean, the landscaping, you know, that's proposed is going to be very nice and a good, a good add to the development, and I would support it, but I just want to make sure that we cover our bases.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carmichael?
First of all, I'm very impressed with the improvements that the owner and management have put on that property the last couple of years, and this is just more of it.
Yes.
And I have no objections. I support the plan. Thank you.
Great. All right. My only comment would be just for staff to make sure that Commissioner Lavoy's comments are listened to, and then also to determine whether or not that detention comes into play off of 61st Street. That would be something very good to take a look at. I, too, am in favor. I like the improvements. It's only going to help the area. Hopefully, it will help maintain rentals and keep your units full, and that's what we're looking for. So thank you. Any other commissioner comments? I will close the public hearing on this, and I will entertain a motion for planning and zoning item 1-9-0-0-6. A request from Phil, what was your last name again?
Roush.
Phil Roush of Hanson Landscaping and Eagle Creek Apartments regarding the property located at 1128 South Williams Street in Westmont for the following. A, a landscape plan for proposed site and landscape revisions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Carmichael, second by Commissioner Sharp. Sorry. Any comments or questions on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Mr. Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Pill?
Yes. So you have our recommendation, and the staff will notify you as to when this will be on the village board agenda. That typically takes place on a Thursday evening over the next two to four weeks. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, and best of luck. All right. Moving on to our next and final item of the evening, planning and zoning item 1-9-0-0-5. A request from Bill Debs of GSP Development regarding the properties located at 301 to 315 West Ogden Avenue and 530 North Park Street in Westmont for the following. A, a zoning map amendment to rezone the property at 530 North Park Avenue from the current R3 zoning to the proposed B2 zoning, and B, a plan of consolidation to combine the properties at 301 to 315 West Ogden Avenue and 530 North Park Street into one lot, and C, site and landscape plan for proposed new medical office building. Ody, is yours? Make sure you've signed in, please.
If I can get, well, it's already up. I don't know how they did that, but whoever did, thank you. My name's Larry Debb. I'm the developer for the proposed development. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. What we're proposing to do is a three-story, 50,000-square-foot, high-end medical building. We've done 19 medical buildings in the suburban Chicago area of similar size and quality. So I think we've become experts, whether we wanted to or not, in building buildings. And it's exciting to me to be back in Westmont. Years ago, way years ago, I did a couple of those buildings on Pasquinnelli Drive, right off of 83, Oakmont Plaza, Executive Place, the Allen Bradley Building, the Teachers Union Building. So it's fun to kind of be back in the Westmont again, and I hope we have the opportunity to build here. Building here, and please, Mr. Chairman, I'll go quickly if you have any specific questions. It's a glass, metal panel, and precast building. So on here, if I may step over here. This will be precast panels in the darker brown. These will be metal panels, and then this is actual glass, all high-end double-pane, low-e, slight blue tint to the glass. HVAC units will be up on the roof and screened, so there'll be no noise of the HVAC units or nearby neighbors. We ask for no variances in terms of height. The benefits of it, one is it's going to clean up kind of an older retail facility that's there now. We're taking Ogden Avenue from a traffic point of view, which currently has five entrances and exits, of which you can go left, right, in, out, any way you want. We're narrowing it down to one, which will be a right-in, right-out, or a left-in if you're going westbound on Ogden. So it's going to really clean up the traffic congestion that's there, currently there. From our neighbor's point of view, we're going to do full stormwater detention, which currently doesn't exist, so all that water sheets off and goes to the south. We'll be retaining that and retaining it on our site in storm trap facilities. On the south side of the property, we're going to place a six-foot-high fence with landscaping on both sides, so from the residence next door to me, we would be providing a wooden fence with plantings on their side of it. In terms of lighting, there'll be no spillover at all onto my next-door neighbor's property. The request, as you said, is really, currently, it'll be mostly, 90% of it will be solely for parking. We have a five-to-one parking ratio. The only waiver that we will be asking for is on the width and the length of some of the parking spaces. And every city does it a little different, every village does it different. What we're asking for would be approved in Oakbrook, Downers Grove, Clarendon Hills, virtually every other community. Yours is slightly different than most of those. You require much larger spaces. So what we're asking for is in some of the areas to go 18 feet instead of 20 feet on the hangovers on the outside and go nine feet wide. You know, it's pretty straightforward. As I said, we're, I think we're experts in As I said, we're, we think we're experts in medical office buildings. This will be financially a real boon to the other taxing bodies. We'll be paying significantly more than the taxing bodies are currently enjoying. And especially the schools will get a majority of that. And there'll be no children, of course. This isn't an apartment building or anything like that. So with that, if there's any specific question, I'd be happy to answer any of them.
Yes. Could you please address the rezoning and why you feel that that's something we should be looking at and granting?
Just to give you an idea, we're talking about, we're asking for is a rezoning of just this section here. And if you go up and down Ogden Avenue, within the village boundaries, you can see that it's been done on both sides. It's done, it's been done here, and that continues all the way. So this is nothing that has not been granted before. Right now, it's vacant, and it actually, you know, you can see that it will become part of the entire site when it's completed. So we're not asking to rezone the majority where the building would be, but for this site where the parking would be, in the consolidated, all in the one parcel.
Okay. Anything else you wanted to tell us now?
We're excited to build a new building.
Okay. I'll turn over and ask the staff to comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, there's a number of issues that this project has raised. The principally, as you've already stated, to, for this developer to move forward requires the rezoning of one existing vacant but residentially zoned parcel immediately to the south of the existing center. It's interesting to note, even on this aerial photo, that it appears that some of the parking used by that retail center actually overlaps onto this vacant lot. So some would argue that there was probably, you know, many thought that that lot was already part of the retail, you know, complex, if you will. So it never, as far as I know, maybe there were some use previously I'm not aware of, but history of this being a non, not for residential purposes, even zoned for residential, certainly would support the developer's petition. In addition to that, we also looked at the general trend of development along the corridor. And in our report, we also made the finding and observation based on my experience working in a number of communities throughout Chicago area that you will find that this type of development, meaning the morphing over time of much smaller depth commercial lots into larger development sites to support more modern development, more landscape requirements, more green space requirements by communities, and certainly a lot of it driven by increased parking standards as well, are necessary to support, you know, more modern, higher yield, more attractive types of projects in many of these corridors. So this is true both along Ogden and Westmont. And you can see that pattern of development, but also true along Ogden and other adjacent communities and throughout, and many communities like Westmont who have had these older commercial corridors. So again, we believe that would be supportive of what the developer is asking for. There is a minor part of this application in that the property currently is subdivided into three or four separate parcels. And if this were to move forward to avoid, well, on the surface of it, in fact, the existing building would appear to be actually legal non-conforming because it appears to overlap a property or parcel line. That consolidation would remove any necessary zoning variances or waivers or whatever, in this case, variances. So that's why we're requiring the plan of consolidation, to avoid any problems with the zoning for this property. And then the last piece is the site and landscape plan is a part and parcel of any redevelopment that you would be approving irrespective of the fact that this would involve a zoning or not. The other important, well, there are many other important facets of this. When we analyze the zoning, the current majority of the zoning, other than the residential parcel, is zoned B2. The B2 currently allows for multi-story office. Both, you can have office use on the ground floor as well as the upper floor. So there's no variance, no special use, no other special approval that this developer would need or any developer, any future owner would need to put in office use within, within any property, actually, that's owned similarly along Ogden, which most of it is, in fact, zoned B2. With that, we've also looked at compliance with zoning standards under B2. And the project as proposed would comply with all standards. In fact, it's been interesting to note as a part of this process to review and something I think the plan commission would, should consider in the future. The ordinance seems to require actually very minimal landscape setbacks along the primary streets, the secondary streets, and either adjacent to residential uses. I made a particular point to the developer in part because I knew that we had some flexibility because there was more parking than was needed than the ordinance would actually require. And I put the burden on the owner to come up with a greater landscape setback, although ordinance doesn't require it, at least along the south property line too, which, you know, this is the property that's going to be most impacted, obviously. And so from what I think is the minimum of four feet, we now have at least a, what, 13-foot landscaped buffer area that will include a, at least a six-foot or eight-foot high, six-foot-high fence. And in addition to that, I imposed and made sure that we had landscaping on both sides of that fence because I really believe that a fence, although helpful, just a blank fence is also generally unattractive. And so that will also be maintained as long as this use by the ownership. So the owner of the south lot, the existing single-family home adjacent, will have enhanced landscaping, a fence, and a wider setback before he would experience any impact from these properties. And the only thing that'll have impact will be the cars adjacent to that fence and any light that might be emanating in the evening. So we've done our best, given the constraints on the site, to try to maximize that. And that was in addition to what actually the ordinance requires. Along Park and Ogden, it's a minimum of four. They've increased it, I think, to five to six because I've made the observation, given the reduced depth of the requested, reduced depth of the parking stalls, that once you include the parking overhang, about two feet, nothing's going to be left for any landscaping except for some grass. So they've tried again as best they could, given constraints, to increase the, increase as much as they could. And the point I made earlier, this is something I think the plan commission over time really should look at as a part of a general update or plan to Ogden corridor itself. In fact, after talking with the chairman, I expected, because I've observed along Ogden Avenue, there's actually some very nice projects. It was nice landscaping, and I've reviewed, you know, Porsche's project recently, and they got some nice landscape, you know, buffer areas, much greater than four feet. So I know the plan commission has made a sincere effort and has worked well with these owners to get more. And I think that really should be, you know, almost the standard, if you will, and something that ultimately should be looked at. But given this project, given their need for the parking and as a medical use, the higher demand for parking, we again have believed that we've done the best we can given the constraints. Other than that, other critical issues, you're well, maybe many of you are well aware that, and stated in our report, one of the bigger issues that the community has struggled with with regard to the redevelopment of this site is the potential impact on the village tax base. That being that the center that's there now, the Long Strip Center, not the vacant restaurant, but the Long Strip Center, as I understand it?
Not vacant.
The restaurant?
Not vacant.
Okay. Sorry. Not vacant. Exists and is leased almost 100%. So the bottom line concern of the village's economic development committee, which did not support this project, and their, I think an advisory committee would be
Correct.
safe to say, so they don't have any final authority, but as an advisory committee, expressed some serious concerns over that issue. And, and so that was one of the reasons that we had asked the developer to follow up with a, a update to the tax impact study, which they have provided to us. That impact study has also been reviewed by our finance director to verify that the assumptions, that the analysis was sound, because we had, staff had received it fairly late. So that information is coming to you a bit late. And we apologize for that, but we got the information late. And but the bottom line, according to Spencer, is that that, that data is a reasonable picture with regard to what the impact. So the developer's testimony with regard to the notion that this has a bottom line greater tax benefit to all taxing districts, including the village, would appear to be at least a reasonably true statement, although obviously we don't know exactly what will happen. So that issue has been addressed. Let's see if there's anything else I want to add to that. We, staff did make comments and observations with regard to the architecture, although we don't generally disagree with the overall intent of the developer to produce a high-quality project. As you well know, the village has for a long time supported the notion of having more masonry and that masonry being yet even a higher quality element of building design. And so we have recommended a number of suggested changes to facade to include more masonry rather than metal panels and EPIS or whatever other metal coping or precast concrete materials that the developer's proposing. So we're suggesting there'd be an upgrade, in our opinion, of those materials to yet bring it more in line with, in fact, what the standards of the village is generally and for this particular use. Because it will. I mean, it clearly will have a significant impact on the corridor. I think it will, as other redevelopments have, many of the, you know, modern redo of the auto uses has significantly upgraded the appearance and the quality of the corridor. And I think this will continue to do so. So we would recommend, or at least request the commissioners, consider the architectural issues as well. Other than that, we've talked about site access. There has been imposed by our engineer that we limit the turning movements on Ogden, although there's a significant benefit by reducing the number of curb cuts and the traffic movements and, quote, "the potential conflicts on Ogden and therefore result in a safer condition." We're still concerned about left-outs onto Ogden. And so the design of this, what they call modified pork chop or whatever, to experience these things that where you're all forced to go either right-in or right-out, this is modified so you're allowed actually a left-in. And that would be the only movement that would be permitted off Ogden. But you can't take a left-out onto Ogden to, again, minimize traffic concerns and accidents. Photometric plans has been provided. They have full compliance. There will be zero light emitted at the boundaries of the property. And they've done a more than adequate job in this regard, even though, I don't believe actually, Westmont has specific light level standards, interesting enough, another side note to do. But this would be clearly not an issue.
I think the village does have photometric standards.
Okay. I couldn't find them. The last thing, and this is actually, interestingly enough, not something that the plan commission actually has to take a motion on, although it should, you know, could be considered. And your recommendations certainly could be considered by the board, but technically the variance, not variance, the waiver to the dimensions of the parking stalls is not a zoning issue. It's just simply another part of the code that the board has to consider. And our village engineer, who is the czar over all things parking, is basically willing to accept the changes as proposed. And you have the evidence of the other communities here that allow for lower standards. And I've found this to be generally true in the work I've done in other communities. So with that, the commission has any questions?
Thank you. Bruce?
Very good report. Thank you, Con. I just want to elaborate on one or two of the points Con just made. First of all, we did ask the developer to provide a traffic study, which they did. And then we had that traffic study reviewed by our traffic engineer. It's an outside consultant that we utilize. That, our consultants were comfortable with their traffic study and the finding that there wouldn't be any negative impacts to traffic, particularly, as has already been stated, because it's consolidating five curb cuts out onto Ogden, down to one. And even that one will only allow three-quarter movements, in and out, right in and out, and a left in if you're westbound, but not a left out if you want to go west on Ogden. So I just wanted to make sure people knew about that traffic study and the review that was done on our behalf. Secondly, at your places when you arrived was a site plan that we had asked the developers to provide. Just clarifying the parking stall dimensions, because they do vary slightly around the property. And we just wanted you to be clear which stalls are which size. As Con explained, it's the village board's decision not to waive the somewhat unique Westmont requirement for 10-by-20 stalls. Most other communities require 9-by-18. And as Con explained, the village engineer is comfortable with the size stalls that are proposed and that are shown on the plan that was at your place when you sat down tonight. Also, this plan shows the three-quarter pork chop that I believe was not included in the planned set that was in your packet. The last item, I just want to call to your attention, and again, this was an oversight on my part. We probably should have included this in the staff report that you received in your packet. Going forward, we will make sure that our staff reports include a section about how a proposal does or does not comply with the village's comprehensive plan. Over time, I'm going to encourage all of us to evaluate proposals against many criteria. The zoning ordinance, fiscal impacts, community support or opposition. But I think an important one, especially for this group, is to always say, what is our adopted plan for this property? And how does this proposal compare with the plan that we created presumably in a time where there wasn't a proposal nipping at our heels or clouding our judgment? But just when we were creating a plan, what did we think made sense at the time? So as you, I believe, are aware, the village adopted a comprehensive plan in 2013. And a copy of the relevant pages were provided for you tonight. I highlighted them in yellow. The plan specifically talks about what the goal is along Ogden Avenue. So the area in question is identified as a local commercial area. That's what this portion of Ogden is designated as in the comprehensive plan. And one of the uses there, and I'm quoting from the comprehensive plan now, "desired uses in these areas include small retail stores, services, and restaurants." So the plan would support this type of a proposal. Additionally, the plan designates this parcel not only as a local commercial area, but it also says it's part of the West Gateway District. And again, you can follow along if you want at the materials that were handed out earlier. But I'll quote the relevant section. It says that in the West Gateway District, which again is where this property is located, "development should continue to include secondary retail, office, and service uses, but should respect adjacent residential neighborhoods by installing proper buffers and screening." And Con already discussed how he worked with the developer. I would say he put the thumb screws on them mildly hard, and they were cooperative to increase the amount of landscaping, particularly on the south, to respect the goal that's identified in the comprehensive plan to protect and respect the residential neighborhood to the south. So I just wanted to add those points to Con's report.
Thank you, Bruce. Appreciate it. Thank you both. John?
I do have a question for staff, and I apologize I didn't raise this sooner, but having not seen the site plan until today, actually, wasn't aware of the landscape strip along Ogden. Is that, what's the depth of that landscape, the green strip along Ogden? Maybe the developer knows.
It varies from the eastern edge about nine and three-quarter feet to the narrowest point, five feet, three inches.
So I think we'd have to go back to answer my question historically, what the village has done regarding setbacks. But the normal setback in the B2 district for a front yard is 10 feet, and there's a supplemental setback along Ogden of 30 feet. And the question is, is parking considered an encroachment into a required setback? And when you look at section 405E, it talks about permitted accessory structures and And when you look at section 405E, it talks about permitted accessory structures and uses in yards, it discusses different encroachments into the yards that are permitted as of right, and for parking, it says they're permitted in the side and rear yard, but not the front yard. And here we've got parking within the 30-foot front yard setback, which I believe should be green space, or if they don't want green space, should be a variance. And I think you'd have to look at maybe the Porsche dealership, which has recently redeveloped, or some other development, just to make sure how I'm interpreting this is, whether it's correct or not, because again, I'm just looking at this tonight for the first time, having seen the site plan. It may be possible you'd have to come back for a variance for a front yard setback encroachment, so I do remember those possibly getting processed in the past. Bruce wanted to respond.
Bruce?
I don't have the reference with us, but when we were reviewing the zoning ordinance, we found some standard that said that there was a minimum amount of landscaping required, and so that's what we informed the developer of. And there was some discussion about whether they would be able to do that, and we said that as a new development, the staff would not support this project moving forward if they needed any sort of variance from landscape requirements. And given their parking needs, it was tight, but they did configure the site so that they got the parking they required, and they did provide the amount of landscaping that we told them was required based on what we found in the ordinance. I'm not familiar with a 30-foot landscape requirement in a front yard.
There's a difference between a setback and a landscape requirement. And so it's the supplemental setback along Ogden that's 30 feet, normally it's 10 feet, and the question is, can parking encroach into a setback? And I believe the answer is no, unless a variance is granted. I will also point out that I believe many variances have been granted along Ogden for, to allow parking to encroach, because there's just not the depth required, and parking has been determined more important than a 30-foot green space. But it has been important to have some green space and landscaping out front, and I know in the past several years, there's been an encouragement to improve the landscaping and streetscape along Ogden. So I have no opinion whether that strip is sufficient or not, I leave that up to the professionals, I just think we need to double-check that, because I don't want the petitioner to get tripped up on a technicality where a variance was required by code and they didn't apply for one. I apologize I didn't catch that, but having not seen the site plan previously, I wasn't aware if that was an issue.
I appreciate that. Just one other comment is, we could slide away from Ogden Avenue, and it was staff's opinion and ours, that we'd rather give more green space to my next-door neighbor on the south.
Sure. And that might be relevant if a variance is required for why you have some hardship.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, John.
I might as well, I just had two questions, but maybe should I wait till question comment? I didn't know if this had been sent to IDOT for review for the ingress egress?
They've taken a look at it, yes.
Okay.
They're thrilled. They cut down from five to one, and the stop that left turning out was important to them.
I figured they liked that.
We don't have final approval, though, of course.
Yeah, I know we're not quite in question answer, but a question maybe someone could ask them, what the status of tenants, whether they have letters of intent or?
We have no letters of intent at this point.
Just building, building, and assuming?
They will come.
Maybe the applicant could talk about market demand and whether there's a need for this.
I'd be happy to. Currently, the medical market is, for brand-new buildings, is zero available, because there's nothing here now. There's a lot of what I would call C-quality that is around, but what we're finding is doctors want the best, you know, and it's great to bring doctors and patients into a community. These are typically higher-income type people, so they'll be spending more money going to the restaurants and taking advantage of that. But we're excited about the market, we think Westmont's a great location for it, and as you can see, there's just no vacancies now. So yeah, we're excited. The rent rates will be in the mid-30s a square foot, just to give you an idea.
Okay. That's all I had, thanks.
All right, thank you. Something that has, I think anyone who's part of our community knows that this is also a fully occupied strip mall at this time, there are nine tenants across the board there. And so I've asked Larry Forsberg, who's with our economic development team, to come up here also and speak before we open this to the public, and just talk about what some of the potential areas are in the village, should anyone be interested, or if this progresses further, for potential relocation. Good evening, Larry.
Good evening, commissioners. Larry Forsberg, Economic Development Director for the Village of Westmont. Yes, this shopping center is completely filled, we have nine tenants in there that currently exist, and with this project is, if it goes forward, our priority for these tenants would be to find them a new home in the community. There's not one business that's located there that we would not want to keep. And so the plan would be to work with each one individually, identify the space needs that they have, the amenity needs that they have, and find them a new home in the community. So we are prepared to do that if this project goes forward, and there's other spaces along Ogden Avenue corridor that we have that are available, there's some spaces in the downtown corridor that are available, there's some spaces on the Chicago Naperville corridor that are available, there's even a couple left in the 63rd Street corridor as a possible option. So we have more than nine options to provide, and we would work with them individually, one-on-one, to find new spaces. Any questions that I can answer, or?
Not at this time, but I'm sure you could be in touch if this progresses, at least with the, so that there's an opportunity for networking to see what's? Great. Thank you, Larry.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from staff before we proceed? All righty, I'm going to invite the public up, if there's anyone who would like to speak on this subject, either for or against. Let's come up one at a time. If you've signed in, great. If you haven't signed in, please sign in, and I would like your name and your address, please, when you come up, so that we know who you are. Everybody will be welcome. And sir, if you want, you could just sort of head over by that wall area there, and you could sort of, we could get right up, and you'll be up next. Yes, ma'am, good evening.
Good evening. I have vertigo, I'm not drunk. My name is Mary Sue Eck, and I have the Catholic shop and Dupage Marion Center and Medjugorje Magazine in Westmont Plaza. Larry and I went, my husband, went into the plaza 27 years ago. We took one part, and then we cut through, and now we have two of the, I mean, it's a pretty big little place now. It is a not-for-profit. We have redecorated, sort of, three times in the last 27 years, and we are doing that now, except we're not finished. It was bad timing for us, because you see, we're not-for-profit. We feed orphans, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do this. I don't know how we're going to move and redecorate and pay the bills and have money for our orphans. We have given a million dollars to orphans since we moved in there. Now, I realize a thing like that is beautiful, and it's, it means a lot to people, it's medical, and it's wonderful, but my orphans, they mean everything to me. Ten of us work there. The magazine goes all over the world, I'm the editor and publisher, and I don't know, if you clean magazines, I do that, too. I don't know how I'm gonna, like, okay, had I known all this, number one, I didn't get a letter. Everybody else in the building got a letter, I didn't get a letter. So yesterday, I found out that this was happening, and had I known a few days before or weeks, I wouldn't have ordered what I ordered. Like, I had something delivered today, it's $8,000. Where am I going to sell it? I'm not going to have a magazine, I'm not going to have a place for a while. You know, I don't spend money that I don't have, because every dime extra goes to the children, and so I don't know the answer to that. I don't have a very well-prepared thing here, because I only had one day, and most of the day I spent crying and not figuring out. I don't have any reason to tell you not to do this, except there are a lot of kids that we help. And I know there's people in that place, I don't care about my money, I don't get money, you know, I make so little you wouldn't believe it, but the kids get my money. But there are people there that they need the money they make in that. Have you thought about that? I guess you have, you do this all the time, but I know that that's hard. So I just ask you really, does anybody get anything back for what they've spent on the place, you know? I haven't even finished redecorating. I got two things coming up, where people are coming to sign books, you know, will I be there? I don't know. So those are really questions that answers are needed, and they're important answers, because there are a lot of kids out there that need my money. Thanks for listening.
I appreciate you coming.
And I did put my address here.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
I appreciate that. Good evening.
Evening. My name is Matthew Sawtell, I'm here to help to speak with Angela Liu. She's the owner of Nails and Facial, which is the opposite from where you're sitting with the Catholic shop. Kind of reiterate what she just said. Earlier this week, a gentleman stopped by to talk to my wife, who works with Angela at the shop, did not identify himself, did not give a business card. My wife freaked out a little bit when she got this, called me up, and I did a little research on the internet. Come to find out, the economic meeting happened in January. No information given to the tenants, no invite, apparently. Did you get an invite?
No. No.
And highlight what was written. Quote, "The developer stated that they would set up meetings with the businesses and discuss buyouts, and that to some businesses, this would be an opportunity that they were waiting for." Be honest. No offense, I thought you guys were going to be the ones who had the opportunity, being the Catholic shop. You folks have been there for years on end. Mind you, Angela and her husband, who just passed away last year when all this rigmarole started up, recently, folks come in, they've invested almost $200,000 into the facility, redecorating the place up, paint, drywall, the works, security system, not to mention the equipment they've invested in. To be very blunt, she's not exactly in the best positions right now, no offense, dying from cancer is one way of draining your funds. And to read those minutes and to see what sort of chicanery has happened over these last few months, I don't necessarily reflect on yourselves, I might not necessarily reflect on your organization, but obviously someone has dropped the ball badly. Is there going to be, depending on what happens with the vote, one way or another? From talking with Larry, and I'll say something, Larry has been very good, when we contacted him yesterday, she came down to the office, Larry was very good about trying to explain the situation. And I am thankful that Larry is going to try to help the nine tenants, try to find a location. But regardless, it feels like there's been a bit of buck passing or ball dropping these last couple of months. Would you like to say something at this point?
Yeah.
Have at it.
Thank you. I first let everybody know my English not too good, and I wish everybody can understand me. Thank you, can let me to talk a couple sentences. And my name is Angela. You know, the last year, and my husband get the liver cancer, he passed away four months ago, and my lease is 2018, March 1st is the end of, it finished. But in that time, my husband very sick, so I totally forget, and my husband get big surgery, so I'm not pay attention to the store, and I think if, I just remember it's March 1st, but I forget which year, but I still pay my rent fee each month on time. And after my husband pass away, so I remember it's March 1st, so this year, and I check in, and I call the landlord, I want to continue, ask attention my lease, but he say no. He say you need to pay monthly, every month. So I don't know why, I'm not asked too much, a lot of questions, and so I'm now thinking about that, I just pay attention to my store, and I, in the January, I buy more equipment, and I pay a lot of money for my store. Actually, I totally hold the property, my money I put in the store. We're immigrant American, I'm a first generation, and I have a son, two sons, they'll go to school. So I think, and I use this store, and I live forever until I die, I with my husband, but I never think of my husband the best way I heard. So, and I get my nail and facial license, and I, daytime, I go to work, nighttime, I go to study, and my English not too good, so it's me, it's hard time. And so I new set up this store, I give a big dream, this is my big dream, but I never know, and until this Monday, it's March 11th, then I know what happened will happen on my store. So make me very, very sad, similar to push me to death. So I don't know how to explain that. And before I come to American, I'm a teacher, it's college teacher, I'm a mechanical engineer, but I come here, I cannot do a teacher again, so I learn a nail and a facial, and I think just I can't live here and make my son get a good education, and this is my dream, but I'm so sorry. But I just, you know, and last night, I talked to my son, my son in the Wisconsin University, and he say, I use the English to translate, he say, "Mom, please enjoy the pen, which is unable avoid." So I said, "Okay, mom, we'll become strong, don't worry." Okay, mom, thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. Thank you.
Yes, sir, good evening.
I appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening on an issue that's very close to my heart. I've been a resident of North Park Street, my wife and I, for the last 55 years.
Can you just?
But we've seen many, many changes.
Excuse me, can you just restate your name?
Some bad?
Can you just say your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. I forget my own name sometimes. My name is Joe Sacco, S-A-C-C-O, and I reside at 510 North Park Street, not North Park Avenue, but North Park Street. It says North Park Avenue on there. Anyway, in the past 55 years, I've seen many, many changes. I've been a huge supporter of this village in the past 55 years. Recently, not so involved, age and time has taken its toll, and now that I'm in my mid-80s, there's a lot of things I cannot do anymore that I used to be able to do as a volunteer for Westmont, and I love this place, I've never been here. We've raised and put seven children of our children through the Westmont Schools, all of whom have graduated here and went on to better things. But I need to speak to this from my heart, because I think the proposal for these two properties is a total abortion, and need not happen. It may even be in a money-grabbing mode to do something to line someone's pockets, but that's not the reason I'm here. There's two major reasons why I'd like to say this should never happen. In all the years that I've resided there, I could probably count on three fingers the number of times during the number of times during the spring and summer that we did not have a severe surface water problem. Mainly because the water gates for surface water is controlled by Downers Grove over on Fairview Avenue. And when we get huge rains, that street and the park, which I live adjacent to, the park is two acres, flood, basements flood. There's been water as deep as three feet in the street. And that is under the control of the Downers Grove, who closes those floodgates, allows the surface water and sewage water not to flow through in its natural path. The building that they're proposing now reduces even more green space. Much more than what we would like, not like, but what needs to be there. We don't want that. Not only that, there's another issue is this is a residential area. The traffic will increase, no doubt about it. And I've seen it change in the 55 years I've been there. And I know that it gets worse every year. And the older I get, the harder it is to transgress Ogden Avenue. Okay. Again, as a resident of that area, my daughter and my son, whom I'm speaking for, also live there. Same street between Travi and Ogden. This is a residential area. Village of Westmont, which I've supported all the time that I've been here, can find better use for that property than let something else occur other than what has been proposed. We don't need that. We are people that reside in an area that have families and homes, and we've put our whole life into, in our savings. And as I said at the beginning, I view this as a total abortion of those two pieces of property, including the businesses. But mainly, I, as a resident there, detest what is being proposed. I see no reason for this to go through under any circumstances, under any modifications. That piece of property there needs to remain for surface water retention. I understand what he's talking about in the building. I'm an engineer myself, or I was before I retired. I know what water retention is. And that, and all this is going to do is exacerbate an already very poor condition. And we've lived with it. We're there, we're still there. But you don't need to make the situation worse than what it is. And then the increased traffic that's coming down there. Nobody's going to tell me that that's going to be beneficial to anyone that lives there or to the community. There has to be a better use for this. And I would tell them how far they could jump to get out of here, and that project should be axed. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity because I wasn't totally aware of what was happening until just a short while ago. So thank you.
Ma'am, I'll have you sign in. I just have a comment here. Just hang on one second. Bruce?
Well, a couple of issues have been raised that I could help clarify. I'm just wondering if you'd like that now or rather hear from the comments?
Let's go through a few more of the comments in case we get some of the same things. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Hello, neighbors. I'm Juanita Ray Dorn. I am the lucky owner of this property to the south of this place that is proposed. I spoke before and offered up a lot of photos about my owners, my neighbor owners, not keeping up their property. And I have several questions. First off, we didn't get a site plan. Where the building's going, where the parking in, what retention, where's the retention area? Where's the fences in relationship? We didn't see any of that. We saw a picture of four buildings and then a picture of my house and what it looks like now. So is there something we can see for that?
Steph?
Do you want me to put something up?
Well, they can see it now, but is there a way they can be directed to see those things also? That's what I'm asking you to address.
So anyone that wants to see the proposal can contact me and I can give people my email and phone number. And we have this information. We're in the process. We haven't implemented this yet, so I apologize. But we are moving towards having this information on our website.
Okay. Well, I have many questions. First off, which we're going to answer tonight with the proposal. Is that going to be leveled from Ogden and then drop off into my property? Or graded? That's just something to think about. There is a massive flooding issue there and it's just getting worse. I had seven feet of water in my house. I've spent all my savings repairing from the big flood. I think this probably would, I've updated all my sump pump things and backups and to keep it out of my house, but it's still going to flow because I'm a little higher than my poor neighbors' south, who get flooding more frequently than I do. I don't see how it was addressed with this, with 90% parking. Where, there's not much green space I see on this picture compared to a lot. I do have, is this the same management company that's managing the property now? I have a question about that.
No. It's my understanding, and the developer can confirm this, that the current owner of the property is maintaining ownership. You gentlemen are developing a building and has nothing to do? Or are you acquiring the property?
We're going to do a 99-year land lease, so there's still no activity. We'll be the management. If you have a question, gentlemen, no, he's not going to be involved.
So the existing owner remains. A new company comes in, builds the building and runs the building, manages the property. The existing property management company would be out under this particular proposal.
Okay. How many units is this building? Was that answered?
Units?
Units. How many businesses will be, doctors' offices?
There'll be 100% doctor's office.
No, how many spaces will be available for that?
I know the market. I hope it'll be one.
Because right now, we have family-owned businesses, which was attested to very, the traffic, the traffic report, I'm confused by it because I turn left many times a day with absolutely no problems right now. You put a big business there and it's going to be a nightmare. Traffic is going to be horrible. They're small and they're only open so many hours. It's, there's always parking there, always. And recourse for, if this does, what do we have when we start flooding? The noise is unbearable. I'm very concerned, mostly about the flooding. And it doesn't say, are you just taking from Ogden and building it all up?
Well, flooding's a valid concern, but in today, you have to, and DuPage County has probably the strictest stormwater detention rules around. And that's not for, they don't go and change what's already occurred, but anything that happens new. So this is going to have to be developed, not only to a standard that didn't exist before when most of the homes and the current strip mall was built, but it's going to be able to contain the water that's generated on that site.
Where's the retention area on there?
Bruce?
So the developers are proposing a vault, a huge concrete box under the parking lot. And it's designed and it's sized according to very strict DuPage County rules so that it holds a certain amount of water based on a storm event and so many inches of rain. And that was one of the things I wanted to mention earlier, and I apologize that we didn't explain this in our staff report. The current site with the retail building has zero stormwater management on it. All the water that falls on the parcel today runs off. When this development, if it's approved and if it's built, they'll meet these DuPage County requirements so that, and I don't know the details, little to none of the rainwater will run off the site. So in terms of impacts on the neighbors and impacts on the surrounding properties of stormwater runoff, this will improve the situation, especially for the commercial building. I'm a little less clear and maybe the developers are more clear. For the residential piece that's proposed to be rezoned for commercial and then incorporated into this, the same DuPage County stormwater rules would apply to that parcel as well. I don't know if we can say as confidently that it will improve the situation, since it's now a grassy lot for the most part. But it will definitely not make it any worse than what's currently happening on the large grassy lot. So I just wanted to make that point about stormwater.
So in other words, they're going to have to contain their water, keep it, and then it's released and timed through a small valve?
What happens when it gets full?
Well, it continues to release.
Release where?
It goes into the storm sewer system. That's designed by-
But at some point, I've seen the sewer spew out water this high at 4:00 AM when I was trapped in my house.
I'm not an expert on it. And we go through engineering at the village of Westmont. And so the detention can't go ahead and go out into other people's properties. That's not allowed.
The developer would like to say something?
Yeah, I can't see him back there. Maybe you can stand up. There we go.
Right now, we have three acres of asphalt. All that rain that comes goes right onto your property. Under what we're doing, we're spending-
Well, she's actually buffered by the green space lot.
But all that rain comes off of 2.8 acres of asphalt across that, onto your property and all the way down to the other gentleman's house and into that park. What we're going to do on our site is all that rain that is going to be stored in a vault underneath our parking lot. So it will significantly improve it. It won't solve all the problems in that area. And I know we've worked with staff because there's a detention pond across the street, which isn't really doing its job. But this would be a significant improvement to what you have now because none of that rain will come over, will come down the asphalt as it currently does across that site onto your property. It'll all stay onto my property. For the chairman's comments, that those rules have changed significantly from when, there were no rules when this was built. So now there's significant rules and we're going to abide by all of those. So there will be a significant improvement.
They have no option.
I mean, we do it anyway. We don't, we're trying to be good neighbors, so one way or the other. If I might just comment one more on the Catholic charities. I'm a foster father. I've had 49 kids living with me. So, and a lot of them have been through Catholic charities. We will sit down with you and work out something that you'll be happy with. And I apologize, the owner, the current owner asked us not to go and contact the tenants until we saw if we had a deal or not. So I apologize for that, but I was kind of doing what I was told to do. So I apologize to all the tenants in there. And we will, if it does move forward, we would like to sit down with all of you at the proper time.
Yeah, I called one of my friends who works over there, whose sister owns the business, and they were unaware of any of this, shocked. Okay, on another matter.
You know, one thing, we've heard this a couple of times, and just to sort of clarify things. Because this property is owned by one person, it's that person's responsibility if they choose, but they could choose to develop the property. So if somebody has a home and you want to put a deck on it or something like that, as long as it's within the rules and they're asking for no variances here. So I certainly want to hear everybody, and I want everybody to approach the podium, but there is an obligation that we have as planning and zoning to look at what the proposal is and what the project is. In this case, it doesn't require any special exemptions, variances, or uses for the property. It's clearly defined that it could be that way. And the landlord, if he has leases with everyone, he has to figure out how to negotiate an end to those leases or take care of the people who have leases. So those things do have to happen. But I didn't want to interrupt you, but I just wanted to say that the developer's sort of in a, between a rock and a hard spot, and planning and zoning is also looking at this not because of notification, but because this is what the owner is asking to do. He's within his rights because he's a property owner. Anyway, please.
Well, the only thing would be that changing a residential property to a business.
You are correct.
Brings all that closer to my residence.
Yes.
I have, which may be mute now, but maybe something can be done if this does not move forward. They took all the snow from the front of Ogden in the parking lot and brought it all back and dumped it over the fence onto the residential property. I did call the police, I did call the village, no one got back to me. I don't think that's legal.
So they dumped it on your property?
I have photos for you.
No, on the residential, the vacant.
Oh, onto the lot, okay.
All that snow that would have been directed a different flow way is going through our yards right now. And just, I know this is different, but there you go, there's some photos.
It's all part of the same puzzle.
I don't know, I don't think I have anything else. I'm just, I'm just very concerned about the traffic and the flooding. The lights from the cars, how late it's going to be open, coming through the fence? Fences aren't. And especially if you raise it, what's a six-foot fence going to do? It's going, you know, if it's down here by, you know, down low by my property and the whole place is built up. I mean, we don't see that in any of these, we don't see any of that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time. Good evening.
I am Bud at Wild. I live at 525 North Park Street. And I'm just kitty-corner from this lot that you're planning on building up. We're a flood zone where I live. I lived there 52 years. And now you're going to put such a kind of a building and all this driving parking lot? You're going to have us flooding again. I've spent so much money doing all these cracks in my basement because of all the water that comes by. The retention pond doesn't keep it all because it's all coming from Ogden. So what are you going to do with Ogden? It's up higher than we are. We have children that play in this park just four lots down from Ogden. Where this 530 North Park is. Now who's going to take care of our kids? We're going to have more traffic. You're going to be killing off our kids. Is this what you all want? Just to put a nice-looking building and more parking?
I hope you're not yelling at us.
I'm not yelling. I just talk this way. I can't help it because this gets me mad.
Okay.
Because 52 years of all this flooding, we got the retention pond, but it only takes so much water. And you're going to build this up? And I'm not too sure you're, whatever they're proposing is really going to keep the water from us. And I'm talking about the traffic too, down park. We have people coming off of Ogden now. They floor it to see how fast they can get to Travi. And now you're going to put more parking and more buildings and my kids go to the park. My great-grandkids go to this park. And you're going to put them in jeopardy now? I can't see building this. And I can't see all this water coming by us. And I don't know what they're going to do because I don't understand all this either. Because they're putting this pipe in and all this other stuff. I don't understand this. What I understand is the flooding we always get. And this has got to stop. So I'm glad you're listening to me, but I don't think you're really paying attention because it's not your kids going to this park. And it's not your kids you're putting in danger, putting all this traffic by us. And it's not my house or anybody else on my block's house that's flooding because of this park and everything. There's so much water around, even our park is all flooded now. But then we have had a lot of snow. We've had had a lot of rain. But still, we're still flooding over there because all the lots are getting a lot of rain.
So if we do nothing?
I don't know what you can do.
If we do nothing and leave the property as it is, you'll still continue to flood. Is that correct? Okay.
Right. Because our park used to be nice. But there's so much water all over. Even a week and a half ago, the kids were in the park. They were playing hockey. They were in the ice because it was nothing but ice because it was all water. This is terrible already. And this is Westmont. We pay taxes. Everybody on this block and all these here, these stores pay taxes. Where is our tax money going? It's not helping us any. I appreciate you listening to me, but this, I don't know. Somebody has to do something.
Well, some of the things you've brought up are certainly way beyond our purview. Tax money allocations and things like that. Those are all village board and finance director type of things. As far as the building itself, that's what we're looking at. And as we indicated to the last lady who spoke before you, there's a great opportunity for that to influence and positively impact the water that flows from this current property downhill towards earth.
You can't prove that to me. I don't understand this. All I know is the water that we do get.
Well, how would I prove it to you if you don't understand it? Well, how would I prove it to you if you don't understand it?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. But all I know is it's this 530 North Park you're going to take, and you're going to be putting cars parking in there, and I don't know what else. And that's putting more water by me. And I don't know if your system, their system is going to even work, to tell you the truth.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that.
And please don't kill our kids off because they play in this park. I thank you.
Thank you very much. We haven't seen much from this side of the room.
Just one comment. I mean, we don't want our people to run over any kids, of course. We did talk with staff about making a left turn only out there so that they couldn't turn right and go down the residential, which we'd be happy to do. Staff didn't really comment one way or the other. The traffic consultant really didn't either, but we'd be happy to keep our traffic going north to Ogden Avenue to keep any of them going south. And again, the stormwater, this is a significant improvement from what they have now. I don't know exactly how to explain it any better than that, but thank you for your comments about it.
Good evening, sir.
My name's Rick Dare. I'm the owner of Blue Village Vinyl. We're celebrating our first year in business, and it's going very well. In fact, we're having a celebration on March 23rd. We'll have Trio performing. We'll have Donuts. It'll be a good time, and a sale, so you can get your vinyl a little cheaper that day. I'm a realist, and I see the handwriting on the mall. If this project doesn't happen, I have a feeling something else is going to go in there. So I'm, I will adapt to whatever happens. I'd be disappointed, it'll be very disruptive. I have a store full of stuff. Have you all been in my shop? It's full, and there's a basement that's actually, I think it's larger than the store, and it's full. Having to move that stuff is a kind of a daunting task. We've been, past year, we've spent every, virtually every day going through it, organizing it, categorizing it, sorting it, pricing it, throwing stuff out, and clearing pathways so you can walk through the thing, and it's been a lot of work. So my only concern is that I do have time on my lease, so I'd have to see a timeline for this. And I think this, my store might actually be the future of retail in Westmont. If I can be kind of grandiose about it. So I'd like to see the store preserved somehow, and I like the fact that Larry has offered to work with us to maintain these businesses. So that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Rich. Appreciate it. Who else would like to speak? A lot more folks here. I see the scarf coming off. Here we go.
Hi, my name is Yefran Lopez. I'm from Las Palmas Restaurant. I'm 26 years in this beautiful town. The only thing is, if we had to move out, I need help from you, everybody, to relocate in Westmont. That's my only comment. Thank you very much.
And Larry can help with that.
Okay.
If we get to that. Anyone else? Okay. Any comments from staff before we move on to commissioners? Yes, Bruce?
If the chairperson doesn't mind, I'd like to just address the issue of notification.
Yes.
And one of the people commented about perhaps a ball dropped or some shenanigans, and I just want to explain, for the benefit of the commissioners, for the people in the audience, and for anyone watching at home, the issue of notification. And on this case, it's a little complicated. The tenants are in a bit of a bind because they're the tenants. Leases would rule in this situation. I believe some of the tenants in the, in the property don't have leases, which puts them at a disadvantage. But where there are leases, the landlord would obviously need to respect those leases, but those would explain what the rights of the tenant are in terms of notification for terminating the lease or renewing the lease, et cetera. The developers in a bit of a bind, and he alluded to this earlier, developers spend money and try to get approvals, and this developer wanted to move along the process and get approvals before they took the step of communicating with tenants. And perhaps if they had done that too soon, it would have caused concern and worry unnecessarily if they didn't get the approval. So they were in that bind of notify tenants sooner or later. We found out tonight from the developer that the property owner, your landlord, asked the developer to wait before notifying or discussing the proposal with the tenant. So I just wanted people to be aware of that. And then lastly, the role of the village. So the village, as the local government, has some responsibilities. We are required by law to provide notices to property owners. And I'm going to emphasize the word "owners." It's a state law. When certain applications are made for zoning approvals, one of those applications is a rezoning. So tonight, because the applicant is proposing to rezone that vacant residential property, we were obligated to notify property owners, and we did do that. I don't believe Westmont, and correct me if I'm wrong, has any locally adopted requirements that tenants, either residents in apartment buildings or businesses in a commercial center, also receive notice. That can be something that we, as a commission, can discuss later if we want to do that. But the laws are set up so that property owners are notified, and we did that notification.
There's a sign that has to be posted on the property, and that would certainly notify the tenants who are there every day that there's a public hearing coming up for that property.
That's a good point, and I know staff in my department did put up a sign, and we'll get to you in a moment if you want to comment on the sign.
We have a sign. It's hidden in the porch. You can't see it. We have to go out and find it and look over the porch if the sign is there.
I'm aware I can give you a thought of that.
Yeah, and I know that our staff who put up the sign had issues because the ground was frozen, and we're talking about new signs that don't have to be pounded into the ground. They tried very hard to find a place to put the sign, and they informed me that they had to strap it to the monument sign, so. But the fact that you saw it at all, I guess you could make the point, you saw the sign and found out that something was happening. The last point, though, that I want to make is there are other things that happen in this process that do not require notification. So in Westmont, there's a, I believe it's a committee of the village board called the Economic Development Committee. They meet occasionally, and they'll talk with developers early in their process of considering a development and learn what's being proposed and give them some feedback. As a government, we're obligated to put an agenda out, but those agendas are just on our website, and they're posted at the entry of the building. There's no requirement for those committee meetings to be mailed out to people. So there was a committee meeting in January. This idea was discussed when it was still somewhat preliminary, and there are minutes of that meeting, I believe, on our website that perhaps someone has accessed. But the fact that that committee meeting in January was not noticed, that there weren't mailings and signs put out, was no chicanery or ball being dropped. That was just a normal committee and a normal process, and we followed the requirements for posting the agenda. But I just want people to be clear on that. And then the last thing I'm going to say, because maybe we haven't emphasized it enough, but staff, the commissioners, the elected officials, Larry with our Economic Development Group, all want the local businesses to be helped. It sounds like the developer also wants that, perhaps later in this process, if they're approved. So Larry's available, I'm available, if this project does move forward, to work with local businesses in the development to see if we can relocate you in Westmont.
Okay, thank you, Bruce. Are there any other folks who would like to come up now that you've had a chance to think a little bit while Bruce was speaking? Or has everyone sort of said their piece for right now? We have anything from the developers that you want to address, any of the points that were brought up, particularly some of the tenants and things like that?
Again, once we get past this, if we get past this, we look forward to sitting down with them. And as I've said, we have, I don't want to open up all my cards, but we have some monies in our, in our budget to help some of the tenants that have leases there now. And those that don't even have leases, we'd be happy to talk to and work with in terms of relocating, especially to Catholic charities. We have money in for that specifically.
Okay. All right, we're going to start with commissioners now, and I'd like to begin with Commissioner Thomas first.
I speak to the developer here. If a lot of the residents are worried about water and flooding, and they see all this concrete and asphalt above their property, and it rains, and they see it come down there. And that's not, the position is not going to change, but the vault that will hold the water, in layman's terms, could you tell me how many gallons will it hold if it's full? What kind of storm does that? 10-year, 50-year, 100-year?
Well, I think it's actually based, and I'm not sure what the code is for DuPage, I think it's a 150-year flood. Now, I will say, though, that we've had-
Sometimes they happen every three years.
A couple of them in the last couple of years. All I can say is that it'll significantly improve what is there now. Will it solve all their problems? Unfortunately, not. But it will significantly improve because all that water that sheets off of three acres now is going to be stopped and stored underground.
What's the capacity of the vault?
It's about one acre foot. So that's 43,000 square feet of, 43,560 square feet of stormwater that'll be held on our site and not go to my neighbor's site.
Any way to convert that to gallons?
Well-
I would understand.
You know, I mean, a square foot is probably two gallons, so maybe 80,000, and don't quote me, and I don't want that in the record.
Right, right.
You know, maybe 80,000 gallons of water. It's all the water that's going to come, that's on my site, that will land on my site. Instead of being sheeted off to my neighbors, will stay on my site. I think that's about as easy as-
Which is about all you can do, is take care of your site. Okay. And again, the Economic Development Commission and Larry, thank you very much for your help and your handing out to, that's what makes Westmont different. And it might not solve everything, but there will be someone there to, in addition to yourself worrying about your future, a helping hand, and I appreciate that. I'm very proud of that. And the first thing that I thought of when I looked at the blueprint and that was going south, going into residential district, I mean, residential area, and how, and I appreciate the 13-foot buffer instead of right on top of each other. And I appreciate that also. That's all I have right now.
It's 325,000 gallons.
325,000-
Per acre.
Gallons.
And this is three acres.
Per acre, and you have three acres.
Volume is the volume.
Oh, okay. Okay, gotcha. You're saying, whoa, wait a minute. Okay, well, it just gives some kind of indication of what the capacity is to retain, and then slowly release the water instead of it just sheeting off to the neighbors. Not injuring any children. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes. I have just a few items. I did, I have considered carefully what my own position was in regards to the use of medical office at this site. And this packet from staff was very helpful. This is just our big-picture narrative of kind of the way the village sees different areas within its scope developing in the future. It seems that this, this area, and I also scoped this out myself, what's the current makeup of this section of Ogden Avenue? And it seems like a lot of restaurants, a lot of retail, a lot of, you know, lots of smaller shops and some service shops. It seems that a medical office building would add positive diversity to this site, to the strip of Ogden. It is a prominent Ogden street front, so there is a little bit of opinion I have that this could be better located somewhere off to an adjacent side street, just because you want to, retail should get the highest visibility along a commercial corridor like this. But overall, I think I am supportive of the medical office building taking over these and combining these plots into one. And the development over, just at large, will greatly increase the visibility from Ogden. The, moving into like the architecture of the building itself, there's just a few things. The entrance canopy, I don't think is represented well on the front elevation facing Ogden Avenue. But I did notice from the site plan that it's not quite actually covering the drop-off, the little turnaround at the front of the building. Just a design suggestion that maybe you guys want to extend that out a little bit further to cover the drop-off so that people aren't getting rained on. Ah, they have to get underneath that.
Can I have you up? Yeah, thank you.
I agree 100%. What happens is you've got to go much higher so a fire truck can get under it. So what we found is shortening it and lowering it so once you get out of the car, otherwise when it's so darn high, the rain and the snow comes in.
Yeah.
So I appreciate your comment, but unfortunately, the codes require us to shorten it.
No, that's, it's thought out, so that's appreciated. The staff also wrote in their report comments regarding the materiality. Usually, especially on Ogden Avenue with its very high visibility, we don't like to see just exposed aggregate concrete.
I apologize, I didn't know that we would be talking about appearance. This is not like a warehouse precast. This will actually look like brick, it'll look like sandstone brick.
Is it inlaid brick or is it just stamped?
It'll be stamped, and it'll be mortared. You'll see the mortar joints. So it'll look like, not red brick or house brick, but, and not like cinder block brick. This will look like, with a slight tint to it, it'll look like sandstone going up the building. It'll be offset going all the way up those columns.
Okay. I would be interested to hear what the other commissioners have to say about the materiality as well, especially at the base of the building. The other thing about the elevations is that they read extremely flat. There's no shadow or line or relief on the building, so it, at glance, to me, it doesn't, it looks like it's missing something that it could easily, you know, achieve, which is a little bit greater.
The precast will actually be proud of the windows a little bit, but for medical, for most offices, you really want a flat line on the interior. You don't want it to jog in and out as the windows, so-
Sure.
There will be a slight setback, so you will see some shadowing, but it's not going to be like a wing sticking out of the building and providing that type of shadowing.
Okay. Signage is represented, but I understand we're not approving signage, so withhold my comments on that. The lighting calculations that were done seem in line, and they make sense to me. Only at the drop-off, I would comment that maybe you want to add light in the canopy so that when you are dropping off, there's more light to do so, so you don't have people tripping over the curb and-
Also, our fixtures are black night light, so none of the light goes up, it all goes down.
No, I'm just, I'm just commenting on at the turn, at the vehicle drop-off, there's-
No, I agree with you.
There's .1 foot candles, which is basically dark. It's just an opportunity to add lighting at that entrance.
And it's away from the residential?
Yeah.
So it won't affect them.
The landscaping plan looked pretty bare to me. There's a lot, like just a lot of brown mulch. And so I, my first question is for staff, and there was commentary in the staff report about this needing to be reviewed if this moves forward by our landscape officials. So is that to say that these quantities have not been confirmed to be sufficient?
Yes, Bruce?
So it's a good question, and I appreciate it. We're still trying to establish procedures in our department for these projects that are going to go both through the zoning review process that we're in now and then the building permit process later. Traditionally, landscape plans have been reviewed and scrutinized by a third-party consultant during the building permitting phase. We may move that review forward and do that during the zoning phase. For this particular project, what we did is ask the developer to make sure that the areas- For this particular project, what we did is ask the developer to make sure that the areas, the islands and the setbacks and the spaces are provided on the site so that if it gets past zoning, if it is approved and moves forward to permitting, then we would have it reviewed by our third-party consultant for the plant materials, the quantities, the salt tolerance, the shade tolerance, et cetera. So for now, the plan just shows areas that are required. The details would be reviewed during permitting.
Just one comment, we meet all the criteria for the caliper of the trees and whatnot, and what we've actually done is along our property line to the south, we have full bushes on both sides of the fence. So there'll be, even though there might be a little crack in the fence where the panel's going to, there'll be bushes on both sides, so they won't see any lights from the cars.
I think this, what you've done in the south is an excellent section, and you've provided as good a barrier as I think you can. There isn't any way to screen the full building since it's three stories tall.
There'll be no shadowing onto our neighbor either.
That's good to hear. And if that's the approach, I can understand, because I can see very clearly on here that there's square footage dedicated to landscaping. But what I'm not happy with is that I see mostly mulch there, which is not going to be pleasing or maintainable, so.
I can jump in, and we can talk about that procedure. I can tell you that historically, when the village had someone on-site, who was at the time Bob Fleck, in-house, working part-time, he did landscape review for the village, and he would provide always preliminary comments to planning and zoning for a landscape plan that addressed things like plant material, quantities, locations, things like that. And even after Bob Fleck left to take a different position, we were still, I think this commission was still getting some preliminary landscape, if not final landscape, comments. And there were requests made about, by this commission, about how to improve landscaping. So to, and the code says that the village board approves a landscaping plan, and it comes, the site and landscaping plan come to this commission first. So again, we could talk about that procedure and what's best, but historically, there has been a landscape plan that's supposed to represent what's actually going on the property. And the ordinances that I draft that approve site and landscaping plans state that the landscaping shown, which would include fencing, have to be continuously maintained, repaired, replaced as necessary.
Okay, that's helpful.
And they're attached actually to the ordinance that approves the landscape plan. So they really can't wait until a year down the road to submit a detailed landscape plan. That's something that gets approved by the village board.
Okay.
Okay. I'm supportive of the areas that are shown. The square footage dedicated to landscaping, I'm supportive. The trash enclosure was commented and was stated that it should be of the same material quality as the building. I would-
Yeah, we typically do it in a precast, but the doors are wood. That would match the fence.
Okay, and the precast would match the building?
Correct.
Okay. I'm eager to hear what the other commissioners have to say about the use on this site and also the architecture itself. I do hear the tenants and the neighbor, and it's quite frankly gut-wrenching, these stories. But I also understand that we cannot stop this from, this group cannot stop that owner from making the choice to sell his building and pursue this opportunity. So while I hear the concerns, there is no way for us to stop this. And if it is not a medical office building, it will be something else. Something particularly with the art, with the art III, might be a louder use, might be something that generates more traffic. So I think a medical office building is a fairly tame use to put next to a residence compared to some other possible uses in the B2. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Bartow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of questions. I wanted to just ask, first of all, hours of operation? I'm trying to ask questions the community who might be listening would have on their minds as well.
Sure. Typically, medical starts around seven in the morning till about seven at night. There won't be any emergency care here, or in terms of a surgery center or something like that.
That was my next question.
We would probably have an imaging center, we'd probably have an orthopedic, physical therapy center there. But in terms of, the majority of the traffic and everything will be more from about nine in the morning till five at night. That's what we find most of our medical, but it will be open longer than that.
Were these-
Not be open overnight or anything like that.
These similar to the other ones that you've done? No surgery, but physical therapy, immediate care?
Some of them have surgery centers in them. We will not have one in this location.
Are you looking to affiliate after this, assuming it goes through and it's built, to affiliate with a group like DuPage Medical Group or another, or what happens after it's built?
Would love them to be a tenant with, but that would be it. But I will agree that what's happened with some of these medical buildings is hospitals, non-for-profit hospitals, Northwestern have come in and built these, and they've been taken totally off the tax rolls. I will not be selling this to a non-for-profit hospital.
Okay. Timeline then, when, assuming it's approved, you would-
Well, after we sit down with the tenants, we would work with them to see what their timing requirements are.
With their leases and so forth?
Correct.
Okay. By a waste removal, how will you manage that?
Typically done interior. We keep our medical, the equipment and everything that's thrown is inside. Regular garbage would be on the outside.
And they're separated?
Locked and secured.
Okay. There was an issue with flooding, obviously, that has been addressed. Snow removal, that won't be?
Well, we definitely won't be pushing it over to our neighbors' lawn.
That's a good idea.
It will be, in some areas, we actually truck it off depending on how much there is. But it would stay on our property in any event.
Suggestions would be assistance if it goes through. Assistance with relocating the tenants, but also assistance with the moving process for those who have a lot of records, vinyl and heavy things.
We look forward to sitting down with them and understanding what their needs are and how we can assist them. And as I said, without them listening to what I'm saying now, we do have money in our budget to help in some of the relocations.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lavoy.
Mr. Chairman, you know I come with a lot of questions all the time.
You?
It's a thorough evaluation here, so I do have several questions. Just an opinion first, and that is, it appears that the project is half-baked from the standpoint of, you were unaware that it would be a really good thing to work with our longstanding people that have leased spaces in this development now. And they're in shock right now because of what's happening. And I want to ask you, what's the rush? And why won't we make a really great project and take our time and work with people to get them taken care of before an approval is granted?
Well, I can't, I wouldn't really do that and spend the time and upset them if we're not going to get approval. So I don't think it's a half-baked, I think it's a phenomenal project also. But I'm committing to you that if we get approval, we move forward, that we will sit down with each and every one of them to find out what their needs are, but not only financially, but also find them spaces and working with Larry in doing that.
But typically, in this particular case, like along Ogden Avenue and developments all up along Ogden Avenue corridor, the real concern is, I know there's concerns with stormwater and other concerns, but the big deal is that these commercial properties border residential properties. And it's no different from other developments all up and down Ogden Avenue. And typically, what happens is that there's a neighborhood meeting for notifications prior to even getting here. And for some reason, that wasn't done, so I don't-
I was unaware of that, that it was requested or a requirement.
It's just something that, you know, it, this type of development, not specific to this particular development, but notifications, yes, they were satisfied. And you didn't do what, anything more than you were asked to do, and you were specifically asked not to, is that correct? Not to notify tenants.
We were asked not to talk with the tenants until we got-
And, you know, my view on the thing is, is that the tenants that are in this particular development are staples of the community. They've been there for their entire lives, a lot of them have. And just relocating them on a whim based on their approval, I, in my opinion, is not the way to go. I just, I'm very sensitive to the community and their feelings, and I understand that going forward, and I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate your comments especially towards Catholic charities, what you've done. It says a lot about character, and I really appreciate that. So I just think that, in my general opinion, that it needs to really become a better solution if we have all these things addressed. And now I'll just go to, you know, some of the technical questions I have. As far as stormwater goes, that was a big concern of residency, and it's a concern of mine too, that I realize that, and I know that code by the back of my hand, because it's what I do for a living.
So you know there'll be a significant improvement.
Right, so I know that it is factual that your detention vault will certainly provide the 100-year event at a controlled release. But I wanted to ask you if that design included, this is a technical question, you may not be able to answer this, but was that based on the .01 CFS per acre release rate? Or was it based on no release rate? And it makes a big difference.
I can't answer that.
Okay.
All I know is that it was designed to code by the DuPage County.
Understood, but the problem-
You would know more about that than I do.
Yeah, where I'm going is, is that the release assumes that you have a release. So when you release water from your vault, it's going in the direction that it went before. But there is such a thing as a tailwater effect on the downstream, which would prevent that release from happening. So I want staff to look at that very carefully to see if that was designed based on an assumed release or is there a tailwater effect? The tailwater effect would basically mean that the water doesn't get out of the vault as quickly as you think it does, and it fills up a lot quicker than you think it does. And the volume of the vault increases significantly with a zero release. So we may think that we're designing it according to, or you're designing it according to what the code requirement is, but I want staff to make sure that we know what that tailwater effect is, and if that impacts the size of that vault, where it's going to impact the neighbors more than it should.
Would you agree though that regardless of this, how much water's coming out of it, it's still going to be an improvement to my neighbors?
I totally agree.
Okay, thank you.
Some of my questions were answered, but I think that, just real briefly on, I'll just go down my list as I wrote them, but on the photometric plan, it looked like you have some dark areas in the parking lot, if you could address that?
It was very difficult though to get the zero lot line and have light, but I think we meet the code throughout the-
I think you're under half a foot candle in some areas. A lot of times we look at light, and the only thing that we look at is how it impacts neighboring property owners on the high end. But what I'm looking at is if you're open till 7:00 PM in the wintertime, and you've got dark spots in your parking lot, it could be of concern, especially for elderly people.
If, we will meet code, we will meet your code.
Yeah, okay, that's all you needed to have here. It doesn't appear that the ambulance has enough room to pull in their front access.
We looked, we had the turning radiuses per staff, so our engineer did all the turning radiuses for your fire trucks as well as the ambulances.
Okay. And one other traffic question that I have is, it appears that we're generating a conflict here. And I realize that you're taking a number of entrances away and down to one on Ogden Avenue. But that particular one, the way it's lined up, it creates a conflict on Ogden Avenue. And that conflict is southbound traffic out of the entrance to the north.
Well, that's why we're not allowed to turn left in front of that. We looked at that, we actually tried to locate them across from one another, but it, we couldn't, we lost so much parking by doing that.
Can we put that, maybe this plan-
I think this one might show it.
This plan here, can we put that up?
When we met with the village's traffic consultant and ours, we looked at how we could do that so that they aligned, and we really couldn't have them align, so what we ended up doing was doing the right in, right out, and only a left, so you couldn't cut in front of-
It's not projecting.
You understand what I'm saying though, that-
I get it.
We can't, you can't turn left.
I just wanted to put the picture of this, you fully understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
That if word says aerial view, and you're com-
What you're concerned about is, you would like it right here, straight across. We've offset it because we have to get down behind a building, so you're certainly able to pull out and go this way.
I don't see that offset. That offset is, according to this site plan, is pretty darn close to that entrance that comes into Ogden from the north.
It's close.
Pretty close. Okay, so here's my concern, just so you know. And follow me, okay? If I am coming southbound out of that existing entrance, and I want to turn eastbound on Ogden Avenue-
You want to go left.
Okay? And we have another car coming from the east that wants to turn into your development, okay? On the left that you're being proposed. Those two cars conflict with each other.
Significantly less than what is currently there, having five entrances. And we don't, we also have a turning lane in the middle of Ogden Avenue.
That's what I'm saying, is really the dual turn lane is there, but that motion is right on top of one another. So in order to pull out or pull in, you have to monitor the four lanes across from you to see if a vehicle is coming out of there as well, not just Ogden Avenue.
Well, if we're coming out of our facility, they can only turn right.
Okay.
So I think I understand what you're saying. Again, it's not perfect, but it's a significant improvement from what's there now.
Actually, in this particular case, I think a jog is better.
Well, we have the jog there.
And that way, you know, if you're turning, going coming, and you want to go east, you have enough room to turn and face each other. Now you're right on top of each other, and you would not be able to make that motion.
Yeah, staff and your consultant, they liked it to be perfect, and we really weren't able to do that, so we did offset it. So to your point, this is a better solution for that, that type of incident. I agree with you wholeheartedly.
Okay. Can staff look at that? Was the building lighting included on the photometrics?
There is no building lighting.
On the outside, there's no building lighting?
Except for, as the trustee had talked about it, we probably will add some lighting underneath the canopy.
Okay.
Front facing north.
Okay. On that site plan, there's a little box that's removed, you know, a piece of property that's undeveloped to the west. No, keep going to the west, there. That one piece is not included? Yes, I understand. It's undeveloped right now, and it appears that it's part of the next parcel. It's undeveloped, and it's an area that could, that appears to be landlocked.
Right, we actually asked if we could improve this for a detention pond.
That's where I'm going.
Honestly, it was for our benefit too, we were going to use some of that. That did not work out as we had planned, so that's why we're having to put everything underground.
Chris, I'd like to address that. It's our understanding that that actually is detention for the adjacent development, that water, there's standing water.
It's kind of an unimproved detention pond.
That's what I've been told.
It's there.
But we can certainly verify that.
Yeah. Does the village have an easement for that detention pond?
It's private.
I don't think so.
There is an easement for detention that I saw on the residential property on one of these plans. So that, I can look for it.
As if there is an easement there, I think you would be entitled.
Honestly, I kind of like underground, so I don't have to, because it's really not well-maintained, and I don't want to get in an argument with my neighbor about me. So we're spending the extra money to put everything underground.
That would be more volume.
If he would want to, you know, we're keeping all of our volume. He should improve his, in my opinion, but I have no control, I don't know how the village, how that works.
I'm just looking at more of a global solution for stormwater.
Actually, I talked with staff about, instead of me going underground, is that pond across the street, really improving that, putting a retaining pond, putting a sidewalk, putting some, and staff decided that it wouldn't be as good as what we're proposing, so we went back to our underground solution.
Okay. I too have concerns about the building itself, especially the roofline. You break up the roofline, would have liked to have seen some materials on the building, but I understand it's-
I apologize, I was unaware that this board looked at the materials. We, of course, will submit them to- We, of course, will submit them to the village trustees though, prior to approvals.
What is the latest lease done on that property? How much time do they have?
I think, I've not seen the leases, but I've been told the longest is 18 months.
Eighteen months. The lease will be in place 18 months from now?
That's the, and again, I've not seen them, so this is, I mean, maybe someone else knows more than I do.
Yeah, I'd like to answer to that question.
I have two years left on my lease.
Two years left. Is there any exit clause in the lease that was...
Not that I've been able to find.
Okay. And how?
Nineteen months.
Nineteen months.
Eight years.
Eight years? Ten years?
Ten years left.
You have ten years left on the lease? How's that going to get done?
Again, I've not seen them, you know, we were told by ownership, we had to come and talk to you first, so that'll be my problem.
Well, to that point, we're not going to solve that tonight, but I think it's incumbent on the owner who, I think there was a request to speak to the village and he is, or it, the entity, I'm not sure, has refused to do so so far, but I think before this gets to the village board level, the owner should clear that up so the village board knows. You know, there are time limits on certain approvals, not with this approval, certainly with variances, they have to be exercised within a year. You don't have a variance, but you may need one for a front yard setback, so if you don't start activity on the property in furtherance of that variance, within a year it expires. So if you're waiting...
I mean, before we come in front of the board of trustees, I will meet with and hopefully work out something that's beneficial to them as well as to me. But I've not done it yet, so I can't really...
Yeah.
Know exactly what, you know, if someone has a 10-year lease, that might be a little problematic.
Mr. Chair, I'm just not comfortable, I'm just not comfortable with a lot of unanswered questions and displacement of tenants and having, you know, leases that are that long and having a development come before us without that kind of detail worked out. I just am uncomfortable with that. And I would ask that we consider a continuance to get some of that stuff resolved, so we have the facts in front of us and we can make a good decision.
I appreciate that.
I'm just not comfortable with the tenants, I'm not comfortable with the way the whole process worked. You know, there should have been another meeting, there should have been notification, there should have been a lot of things that went on here and I'm not happy about it. And I'm not blaming anybody for it, but I'm not happy about it.
I mean, one of the other alternatives is not to rezone it and do a smaller building there, which we have plans for.
Well, really, I think you did a good job. You know, it's just the process, you know.
I understand your concern, but I think either it'll be a smaller building without the rezoning or a bigger, more, you know, more taxes and whatnot and to be able to solve more of the stormwater problem. So, I mean, it's kind of going to happen one way or the other, I'm afraid.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I look forward to the other commissioners' testimony and their questions and, you know, that's my gut feel, I'm going to leave it at that. I'm not, I'm not ready to grant an approval on this.
Thank you. Commissioner Carmichael.
Thank you, Chris. First of all, off the record, different subject, thank you for being a foster parent.
You're welcome.
I have one question on this barrier on the south side, the 13 feet that our depiction shows the fence running through, but with part of the barrier on the south side of the fence, is there, is that correct?
They asked us to move the fence off of the property line, move it into our property so I could put planting on both sides.
Okay, that's, there'd be plantings on the south side of the fence as well.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think the point is, is that the site plan isn't really showing the accurate location of that fence.
Yes, okay.
There's a discrepancy between that and the landscape plan.
All right, thank you. And to clarify for Commissioner Sharp, I believe the proposal is that the owner of the property is keeping ownership of the property, just redeveloping it, not, you're not buying the property.
Not buying the land, it'll be a 99-year...
Ninety-nine year. Ninety-nine year lease.
Right, but I'll own the building.
Okay, got it. Yeah, when I look at that corridor, I see on both sides of Ogden, all along that whole length is all commercial and has been. This would be a change. I don't, it's going to be a, you know, good-looking building and everything, it just, you know, up on Pasquinelli would be a more appropriate place, but...
Looks like a Pasquinelli building, doesn't it?
You know, as a, as this whole, just looking at this whole project, I think, first of all, I feel and I can hear the emotion, both with the tenants who are, it's going to be very disruptive to their businesses and their lives and the neighbors. You know, it may not be a legal requirement to communicate with them, but I think the owner could certainly have done a better job of communicating this with people to start with. It's, well, unfortunate at best. I am satisfied with what I've heard, that the water issue that the neighbors to the south and the southeast across the street are concerned with. It sounds to me like it could even make things better and certainly not worse, I'm satisfied there and I...
It will make them better.
I don't see noise as being a significant factor here either for the homeowners to You know, your folks want to do is certainly legal and I, I'm not sure if I agree or disagree with you, Chris, that we should continue this and listen to, get some more of these questions answered, but I think that's all the points I had to make. I would certainly hope that the village and the developer would assist these businesses in relocating.
Again, legally, I don't have to do anything, but I'm, you know, testifying that I will be helping them financially.
Got you, okay, thank, that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Buren.
I think that if things were handled properly in terms of the communication between the owner and the neighbors and the, and his tenants, the same hardship would still be coming to all these people. It might not be as impactful because it would ooze rather than come, but it obviously will come. The, and it's been mentioned before here, if not this, something else, apparently the owner has decided he wants to do something with this property. The owner is not here, he chooses not to be here, he's chosen not to notify. That is a concern of ours, but I don't know if it's one that we should take into consideration when we have a buyer, a seller, we've got a, or a developer, we've got somebody that's asking for something without, without any variations and not asking for anything special. The use he's asking for is one that's already included in our B2 zoning. So while I am sympathetic to Commissioner LaVoy's point that this should be hauled up to all these things I ironed out, I don't really think that's the emotion that should go into this, this board's decision. I think this board decision has to be made pretty much on, as I said before, someone comes with something that is within all the requirements, he agrees to meet all the water requirements and the communication that should be or will be is something that is going to have to be dealt with by somebody other than this body. That's my position.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, my turn. I've got some questions. You mentioned a six-foot fence in the back. Is that a wood fence, did I hear you say?
It was asked, it'd be a wooden fence.
I happen to like the, I don't know the material, but the plastic type because they require...
We'd be happy to change it. The code says wood, I believe, but if you prefer, if the board's recommendation and staff approves it, we have no problem in doing it with like a PVC-type fence.
Yes, they're much more aesthetically pleasing, I think, there's less maintenance required.
I'm happy to do that.
Great, I appreciate...
Chairman, I'd like to just add to that, there are, we had mentioned some polymer composite materials that are better than the standard PVC that I've seen and I've seen on other projects and they're simulate a wood look. So it gets to what you're doing, but my concern is, some of the PVC stuff I've seen looks cheap and I don't know that it holds up well over time.
Well...
So I would just put it out there that we should be looking at another type of material that has more durability.
I just don't want a wood-slabbed fence up there.
I would say what I'd like to do is meet with my next-door neighbor too and show her some, maybe some colors, would she be dark, a little lighter, and we'll work with staff in terms of the material that they would prefer us using for that fence.
I think that's great. I appreciate your clarifying the size of the stalls. The reports that we got did show three different width dimensions, which is what caused the confusion. I'm supportive on record of a nine-foot, I would not be supportive of eight or eight and a half, which were both in the write-up. I appreciate the photometric plan, I also thought that there were dark spots, I thought that the front entrance, as Commissioner Sharp indicated, was a problem. And I'm curious whether or not, since there are going to be defined hours to this, whether we can have at least the back half of the lights shut off on a timer at night, you know, nine o'clock, 10 o'clock, something like that, so that cuts the whole back half down. We do that with a lot of our car dealers that butt up to residential, there's not a problem.
I would not be opposed to doing that.
I'd like that to be part of the record also. I would like to make sure, and I think you've already addressed it, so some of these things we will go through quickly, but I want to make sure that the trash enclosure does match. Again, our preliminary write-up did not have that agreement reached. I want to make sure, and you've already said that...
The precast, exactly what's on the building and wooden doors.
Yes. I think we've hit the detention as far as we can, that's, I understand that and I think Commissioner LaVoy did a good job of explaining that. I wanted to go back though, because I'm not fully comfortable with the snow removal. I understand what was happening, your pictures were very helpful and particularly as you caught the bulldozer with the lights on dumping it. So obviously that option is gone now, but one of the options that's going to take place here, as a former property owner in these areas also, is typically you plow away from the entrances, you plow away from the front of the building. That's going to move it all to the back and it's going to defeat the purpose of detention at that point when the melting starts because it's going to go backwards, so...
Really, not quite, because those are all bushes, so we can't really pile it on top of the bushes, so it would have to stay...
You can't, but it gets done at properties up and down Ogden Avenue. It's, this winter was unbelievable.
Better job of managing than that, but I understand what you're saying, but we do, as I said...
Well, it's good, I'm calling it out right now, I want it part of the record, so when it gets to the village board, if it gets that far, I want it to be established that that was something we brought up and we discussed and I don't want it shoved back towards the people who live behind you.
It will not be.
Is there any plans for irrigation?
It'll all be, all the planning will be irrigated.
Now, does that include the south side of the fence also?
No, it would just be on the north side of the fence, although the bushes I...
Would there be a drip line along there that might? In other words, what I want to make sure of, who's responsible for the upkeep?
It would be on my property, so I would be responsible for it.
It'll all be on his because he set the fence in.
I thought so. My point was though, but you're irrigating everything on your property but that, that...
Right, I mean, my understanding from the landscape architect is that these bushes are ones that are strong and that...
Mighty?
Yeah, they're, and they're big, I mean, these aren't going to be little bushes, these are good-sized bushes that do not, they'll be watered at the beginning, but they don't need full irrigation, like some of the other smaller bushes and flowers that we'll be planting.
So those are most of the good points. I do like the three-quarter pork chop, I like the entrance setback for traffic flow, I don't have a problem with that. So I do feel that even though we've gone up with landscaping, I still feel it's underlandscaped, particularly with what we're seeing these days up and down Ogden Avenue. And we've had several examples where we've had additional landscaping because we're trying to create a corridor and it takes time. You have to have turnover and either new building and things like that. So I'm not sure if these plans are going to be looked at any further, but that is an area that I feel there's still some work can be done, not only for them, I forgot who made the mulch comments, but Commissioner Sharp, okay? But I just want to make sure that staff knows that I'd like to see as much landscaping as we can get in there and if we have to juggle some things around, we need to do So we get back now to the overall subject and I guess one of the things, I was not privy because it was not included in our details, that you're working with a potential 99-year lease for the property.
We have, I mean, I don't want to get into that, some of that, it might be private. It could be a purchase, it could be a 99-year lease, just in front of the board, I didn't want to say for sure it was going to be a sale and then someone come back and go, oh, you know, you bought it, so...
I understand that.
Either way, I'll have control of the site.
It would just seem that in the course of due diligence and negotiating that, there would be some expectation of what the leases that you're looking at absorbing would be. 10 years seems to be a fairly, if that's accurate, 10 years is an extended period of time and obviously that's not in your best interest for developing this property.
No, if indeed it is 10 years and we can't work out a deal with him to relocate, we would not be waiting 10 years to build it.
Mm-hmm. So, you know, that's a point and, you know, it makes us wonder, it makes me wonder, I shouldn't say us, it makes me wonder about approval on this also because I struggle with the fact that there's a lot of Ts that aren't crossed and Is that aren't dotted yet. And we're asked to make decisions here and make recommendations to the village board in their best interest and in the village and community's best interest. And so I have trouble with some of those. I'd also like to ask John a question one more time, I know you explained it before, but I'm also concerned about whether or not we vote on this now and it's determined that there is a variance required for the front yard setback. Can you, I mean, is that something that we should be looking at possibly continuing this? And that would also, in a way, while I know that the tenant leases are not under our purview, we're part of the community too and I frequent a lot of these businesses also. Is that something that we should be looking at for this variance, that we should be thinking about a continuance till we get that settled? And that also gives, I mean, the cat's out of the bag now. That gives you an opportunity to start talking to some of the tenants.
If I have permission, which, I don't know if I'll get permission by the owner to talk to his tenants.
Yeah, it's really incumbent on the owner to communicate with the developer and so that you have a full understanding what the lease situation is and convey that then back to the village, so the village knows whether it's approving a project that has viability or not. I don't see any point in going through this exercise if there are 10-year leases with lessees who don't want to get bought out. Seems like we're spinning our wheels. Do you have a written lease or a written lease subject to zoning contingencies?
We have unexecuted at this point, waiting until tonight's meeting.
Okay. So to answer your question, I guess, sorry, if a variance is needed, you can proceed either way. You can approve the site plan tonight because the assumption is, based on the parking needs and where, you know, the owner or the developer would probably want parking up front along Ogden Avenue, et cetera, granting the variance would not change the site plan. So you could approve the site plan, the consolidation and then republish for a variance and if in the course of the public hearing for the variance, you determine that, hey, you'd now think there are some changes to the site plan that are necessary, that could, you know, come back also if it were considered a major enough change. If it were just a minor change, it could go to the village board. That's one option for dealing with it. The other option is to postpone all of this until next month, figure out what's going on with the tenant situation, at the same time publish for, I think we still would have time to publish for a variance for next month. I don't know if...
I thought I have an option, but I would like to... I thought I have an option, but I would like your first option, to get approval from the board for the site plan if we have to come back with variance. Then I can go back to the owner and say, hey, I got approval. Now may I speak with your tenants? Because if we kind of postpone it, he's going to say, well, you agreed, Larry, to wait till you got approval from the zoning board. So I'm kind of stuck in, but it gives me an opportunity then to have the opportunity to sit down with these tenants and talk to them to find out what their needs are, you know. And if it's a 10-year lease and the guy says, hey, I'm not moving no matter what, you know, I'm really-
Yeah. Well, that's up to this commission.
Yeah, no, no, I understand that entirely, but I'd like a little help with that.
This commission's a recommending body only. So it does go to the village board for final approval. And there have been circumstances where this commission's approved projects, village boards denied them, and vice versa.
I like the idea of getting the approval from this board to go and then give me that time period to talk with the tenants. And then if it turns out that we do need a variance to come back a month from now, of course, we would do that. But at least it gives me some ammunition to talk to the current, to the landlord, so I can go and talk to the tenants.
So whether you try and solve that problem with the, with the status of the leases and the developers solves it in cooperation with you, or whether that's up at the village board level, you know, that's up to you guys.
Okay. And I do have a comment I want to make to staff. And I appreciate the extra handouts we've had, particularly on the comp plan. I call reference to page 72 of the comprehensive plan also, in which the West Gateway is defined as a high visibility, important image, and overall aesthetic look to the village. And as part of my comment about increased landscape, so if we're going to buy this part of the comprehensive plan, we're going to buy this part also. So I think that's important to do that. And I think that's an important clause in that comprehensive plan. All right. While we hold off here yet before some more discussion, I'd like to call this lady back up to the podium. Nope, just in front of you. You had a question a moment ago. Can you do it up here, please? We have to do it for TV.
Are you reopening the public hearing then?
I didn't close the public hearing yet.
Oh, sing her name. I'm looking for, was there an impact analysis on the noise, the exhaust, lights, all of that? I didn't hear anything about an impact analysis of that in the area, particularly down Park.
Well, we have photometric plans on the lights, so that's all in good shape. Typically, there's not any noise factors with an office building.
And you answered my questions about, I had a question about the lights going off up against the, you did that one already. That was my main.
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think they agreed to that also.
Yes.
Yeah.
I wrote that down.
Mm-hmm.
Just a slight quote from Hitchhiker's Guide to the Galaxy about notifications. If this is going to be the way it's going to be, so be it. Emails will just include the locker room and the cheetah and get it over with. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have one information that you know. If the last year, my husband did not get a big surgery, I get my lease continue, get 10 years. Now I have nine years. The last year, and my husband very sick, and so I totally forget. Even I forget, I think landlord need to call me, let me know. But nobody tell me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. This is last call on the public. All right. Commissioners, what say ye?
I, I'll speak.
Sure.
I really, after hearing the rest of you guys speak and the different issues that you brought up, especially Commissioner Lavoie and yourself about, you know, Commissioner Lavoie's concerns about different things that are unanswered, raised concern to me. Even under, even understanding my, still I have the position that I think something needs, something will be going forward here. But there are other questions that might need still be, to be answered. I also think the aesthetic of the landscaping, not really understanding what the landscaping is going to look like is a concern for me. And the building aesthetic is a big concern for me, because it, this building, quite frankly, in my opinion, looks like it's designed to go in Paskin Alley Drive, in a business, in an internal business office park, rather than Ogden. That's my opinion. It's a very stern, very severe looking building. It doesn't look welcoming. It doesn't look high quality, in my opinion. So I think, I think if we continued this forward, it would give the applicant time to address, I think, the site plan, the architecture, the lighting plan, if there are, Commissioner Lavoie inferred, there might even be some areas that are not up to code. And just to give the community a better understanding around it, wouldn't, even though it's not required, would be a benefit to the community. So I think at this point, I would also second a motion just to continue this. But I'm open.
Commissioner Thomas?
I'm of the opinion that we should vote on this in giving him a weapon with the owner. And he can always, and we can always come back and do whatever's needed. And that's where I'm at.
I would, I would respond to that with, why can't we put the owner in the position here? The owner has not shown up. The owner has not notified his tenants. If the owner wants this project to go through, he needs to allow the developer to talk to the tenants. We should not be letting an approval hang over our heads to get that work done. That's just due diligence from the owner.
I would agree with that.
If he wants this project to move forward.
I don't think anything's hanging over our heads. We're either going to vote for it, or we're not going to vote for it, for whatever reason. And I'm in favor of voting for it.
Okay.
I am too.
I am too.
I'm going to vote or suggest we wait. I think the, I think we need to hear from the owner. And I also think that if there's a variance, which we're not sure of, we can include that in the next time we talk about it. So I would, I would suggest waiting another month.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make one other comment.
Yes, please.
And that is that I don't necessarily think that voting in favor of the project tonight gives any kind of leverage. We don't have any kind of evidence that that's the case. And it's out of our purview. Secondly, there are several long-term leases that are involved here, several of them, that have multiple years on their agreements. This isn't going to go away in one month. And I think that it is prudent, certainly, to get some of these questions answered before we send it to the board. And I feel pretty strongly about it. I'm not, I like the project. I think the project is a good project. But I just think that every other case that we have, either on Ogden Avenue or downtown that we have, we're sensitive to our business owners and the folks that have been in town for their entire lives. And I'm okay with giving them a month. I'm okay with pleading their case. And their lives have been upset to the nth degree here. And we have unanswered questions. I have misquotations on stormwater about volumes. I have no traffic engineer. I have no architect here. This is a big project. And this is half-baked. And I'm going to make a motion to continue.
Okay.
There's a motion.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second, okay. Discussion on the motion. I want to call the developer backup, please. So you understand that we're going to move in one of three ways here. There's either going to be a continuance, or there's going to be, and it appears to be somewhat split, or there's going to be a vote, and that vote is going to go either positive or negative as far as the recommendation. Do you have a comment as to what you're looking for?
Well, of course. I mean, just because we postponed it, that doesn't mean I'm going to have the opportunity to talk to them. So we're going to be back here in a month in the same situation, where the owner says, I don't want you to talk to my tenants until I know that at least the zoning board has approved the concept. So I don't see what the negative is. I'm disappointed that you feel that we don't have our stormwater finalized or figured out, or that, I mean, the engineers have told me, staff has reviewed, that the stormwater meets all the codes. And it's, and you yourself agreed that it was an improvement. You know, all I can say is I will commit that I'm going to meet with each of them immediately upon a vote tonight in my favor, and understand exactly what the lease terms are. And, you know, money talks too. If I were to offer some money to them, they might say, hey, I like the idea of relocating to somewhere that Larry finds for them and having some cash in their pocket.
Well, keep in mind that of the three options, only one was positive. So two out of three, we're not. And I'm not sure that that gives your agreement the ability to pursue that in either of those two cases.
It's, we- I really don't know either.
It's odd that, knowing that there may be a variance required, that getting a recommendation from this body would suddenly give this gentleman permission to talk to the tenants, or otherwise he doesn't. Either case, it's incumbent on the owner, I think, to talk to the tenants. And it's questionable due diligence. If you have a lease fully negotiated that you're ready to sign upon zoning approvals, but you have no idea-
No, no, no. I don't sign it until we get trustees' approval.
That's what I said.
You said zoning, I'm sorry.
Trustees give zoning approval.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This body, once again, gives a recommendation. I find it highly questionable due diligence on your part to enter into a long-term lease upon zoning approval without knowing what the underlying lease situation is with the tenants there.
As I said, I would not, I'm not, by the time I go in front of the trustees, I will have met with and negotiated every one of those. And if it turns out that, you know, there is an eight-year lease and he's not going to move no matter what I offer him, you know, I'm not going to sign the lease and we're not going to go in front of the board of trustees. Maybe there's a fourth option. If I could get a non-binding vote or comment from everybody, so I can go back to them and say, look, they didn't vote, and there's a couple reasons why. One is the ability to allow me to go talk to your tenants. And two is to finalize the, but, you know, they voted in favor of it once those things are done. If, I don't know if that's legal even, I don't know. But it would give me some ammunition. It would also make me feel more comfortable to spend more time and money, you know, that the board likes the idea and making the assumption we can get the leases taken care of and finalize the zoning thing, that I'm not wasting my time. Because I want to come back a month from now and everybody goes, no, I'm against it. You know, we've wasted everyone's time in that. So maybe a fourth would be a non-binding, yes, I like the project, if we can finalize the variance, and if you can work out with all the tenants. So then I, you know, I just want to come back here a month from now and everyone says, nah, we don't like it. You know, we've wasted everybody's time. And I've upset the tenants too, right, you know. So right now, if everybody said, no, we're opposed to it, the tenants are happy. And I go on to, you know, Downers Grove or wherever to do it.
If we don't, if we vote to delay it for a month, he's not going to have any basis to have any chance to talk to these people. That month is going to mean nothing, except we might find out about the zone, the landscaping.
And the variance.
And variance, and the variance. But he's not going to have-
The owner.
Opportunity. Right now, he's not, he's precluded from, from talking to them till he's got a deal.
But couldn't the owner step forward and have a discussion? I mean, it sounds like he's-
I wish he did.
Recluse or something.
I wish he did.
He's out of town, by the way. I mean, I'm not standing up or defending him, but he's not like he's sitting at home, you know, having a beer. Again, if we could get a non-binding nod that, yes, we kind of, we like this project, that'll give me comfort that I can go back to him and say, hey, there was a reason why, there was a zoning variance issue that came up at the meeting, but they were generally in favor of it, and let me now go talk to your tenants.
It's not recommended.
I think that's a, you know, again, it's not a legal vote. It's just a direction vote for me.
So given the open questions about architecture, et cetera, landscaping, I'm not comfortable recommending a non-binding vote at this stage, particularly while staff investigates whether in fact a variance is required for the setback. I think you're either going to make your vote or not make your vote, but not give a mixed signal that, yes, this commission's in favor of something when they could change their mind.
But a continuance with notes being taken would, in effect, I mean, it would highlight our concerns to move forward. I don't think anyone here has said that they're against this project and that it's not overcomeable. You know, I think we've expressed some concerns. And if the owner wants to read this manuscript or these minutes and see what the concerns are, then he would want to overcome.
Or watch the video.
It's very close, it's very close to what you're talking about. It's an understanding of where we see the weak points.
No, I feel pretty good just from the comments, especially yours, or that, you know, you're generally in favor of it. You know, as long as everyone says we're generally, but, you know, if, I just want to come back and waste your time a month from now and you guys say, you know, we're opposed to it. We always have.
But I also think that the owner obviously has a desire to sell this property or to lease this property. And as such, he needs to allow his developer to talk to the tenants. That's not, that is not in our concern. I really think that the owner needs to step up and do what he needs to do to get this project moving. It's, he has a vested interest in doing so.
I agree.
Yes, Commissioner Thomas?
I'm not comfortable with the non-binding thing. We're either going to yea or nay. And that will give you-
Yeah, but the yea or nay is not on the project. It's on a continuance. So why don't we just go with the continuance?
At this point, at this point, right. And if there is no continuance, then there will be, we'll be calling for a vote. Okay, so.
And in either event, it sounds like if it is continued, the developer may not have a chance to talk to the tenants. We may be back in the same position. And I would still recommend, under those circumstances, do your job, vote on the zoning aspects of it. And when it goes to the village board, they can figure out whether the tenant situations have been worked out.
Correct, correct. Any further comments? We have a motion-
We have a motion on the floor, right?
We have a motion on the floor. We have a second on the floor regarding a continuance for a month for additional work on the landscape, looking at the variance, and trying to make the attempt to talk to the tenants. That's what the motion on the floor is. May I have a roll call, please?
And the architecture.
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel.
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoie.
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael.
No.
Commissioner Sharp.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas.
No.
And Chairman Pell.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so-
Yes, as have it. It'll be continued for a month.
Right. So that is a continuance of the public hearing. And because it's continued, there's no need to republish for next month for what was on the agenda tonight, which is the rezoning, site planning, and consolidation. But if a variance is necessary, then there will have to be a new legal publication just for the variance.
And you can make that decision, determination in the next few days.
Next couple of days.
Probably tomorrow.
Okay. So that we can catch that and it'll all be done at one time. I would also encourage the tenants to reach out to your landlord. He's the person who is not here tonight. And so maybe you're able to reach out to the landlord and see what can happen from there. Or at least tell the landlord that you'd like this gentleman to be able to have permission to talk to you. So there is somewhat of a chicken and egg kind of a thing going on here with this. So-
Bruce would like to talk to you.
Yes.
So for the benefit of the commissioners and the public, the meeting in April, at which this item is being continued until, is Wednesday, April 10th. It's the second Wednesday in April, 7:00 right here.
April 10th. Everybody got that?
Thank you all. Appreciate all your comments.
Thank you. I would also ask too, Larry, perhaps at the next meeting, if you have some building material, things we could see, some examples.
I was unaware that the zoning looked at the appearance.
We do like to take a look at that.
I'd be happy to, absolutely. I'll bring in some materials, so you can see what we're talking about on the precast.
We'd like to see that.
We'll look at the lighting. I don't know what more I can do on the stormwater. I mean, it kind of is what it is.
I mean, you might just have your civil engineer present. That might-
No, they're going to say that they're doing it by code. But let me see what her schedule is. And also, we'll look at the lighting to make sure there's no bounce parts. And we'll add the lighting underneath the canopy.
The tailwater is important component of that.
Yeah, again, it's going to be by code. Whatever the code requires us to do, we're happy to do that.
Great. Thank you very much. Yes, Bruce?
Before the developer slash applicant leaves, and for his benefit and for my benefit, I've got a list of things that have been suggested. I just- I just want to be clear for myself what we are going to require them to come prepared with at the next meeting. One is this issue of a variance, that'll be for village staff to determine and, and take care of any required notification, so we'll do that. There's this issue of building aesthetics. Can we be very clear both for staff and the applicant what we're expecting them to bring next month with regards to elevation details, material boards, anything like that?
Material boards of any materials present on the exterior.
The three materials, the metal panel, the glass, and the precast.
I think revised elevations that have shadows turned on in the image so that we can actually see in depth.
More of a rendering than an elevation.
More of a rendering, yeah. And I, I think, I think that the roof line is the biggest offender with the aesthetic just being so long and so flat. It's not pretty, so I think--
Unfortunately, if I were to raise it like over the, we would ask staff for another variance in height. Right now, we're, we make the 45 feet and we need--
Well, it just looks like a box right now, and it can't look like a box. It needs to have some articulation to it, and I'm sure your architects are brilliant. They could, they'll be able to devise a solution to give some relief in the facade.
Bruce, continuing.
We talked about lighting, so they'll look at the lighting plan and see if they can revise it to increase lighting internally but still meet the village's rules, yes? And then at the end, a couple of ideas were thrown out. I especially want the applicant to be clear. Are we expecting them to bring a traffic engineer or an architect or a stormwater person to the next meeting?
I don't necessarily have a need for those things as long as we have the right information.
I agree. And then my last question is, there's, what most of the discussion has been about is regarding leases and tenants, and it sounds like that's really the property owner that we're hoping can be here next month, yes?
Or, yes, to that, or he can also designate Larry as his representative to speak to those people on his behalf.
I mean, I'm pretty sure when I go back to him now and tell him what happened at the meeting, that, and I'm going to kind of say, look, it was postponed solely so I have a month to talk to your tenants, and without that, this is going to go on forever. So, I, and I, you know who the owner is, I think--
They are.
I, I think he just wanted to make sure that, that it made sense.
This is a good chance to partner with Larry Forsberg, our economic director here, and I think that would, he would, certainly has a stock and inventory of what's available, and you combining with what can be done and finding out what's required out there based on leases and things, I think we can make some magic happen between now and next month.
I would agree with that, sir.
And one last question.
Yes.
Do, and should the applicant be required to have a final landscape plan that has been vetted by our landscape consultant at next month's meeting?
Yes.
And we're happy to abide by whatever, but, yeah, if you could get it to him right away so we know what--
Well, a heads up, we'll need a full landscape plan then to us soon so we can forward that to--
I think it has a list of all the plants and the amount, but I'll, what would be perfect if I could have my landscape architect talk to your landscape architect.
Sure.
They talk a whole different language and find exactly what you want, what the village wants. We're happy to do that.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you again.
I want to thank everyone who came out here tonight, gave up your Wednesday night. I know it wasn't because we're just so entertaining that there was nothing better to do, and I hope that we'll be able to work out something that's beneficial to both the landlord, the developer, as well as the tenants and the, the neighbors who live on Park. So, thank you all for coming tonight. That's our last item on the agenda. Are there any miscellaneous items or notices you'd like to have? Yes, sir.
I was just going to announce prior to this item being continued that at the moment there are no cases for the April meeting, and I was going to ask the question if you wanted to have a workshop or cancel the meeting. That won't be required now because this item will be on the April agenda.
But it'll be over in five minutes, you know?
Will it be? At some point, maybe after this item at next month's meeting, we can have a discussion about if the plan commission wants to have some workshops, discussions about procedures. We can talk about what kinds of notifications we do and don't provide, and if we want to make any revisions to that. So, maybe if it's acceptable to the chair, that could be a discussion item at the end of next month's agenda.
Yes, I think that would be good, and perhaps you'd like to introduce our new village planner.
Thank you. So, this is Nalini Johnson. She started with the village two weeks ago. She's our new village planner, Nalini.
We welcome you.
Welcome.
And, actually, I'm glad you brought that up because I also wanted to mention, and then Khan might want to mention something. Khan has filled in as the village's interim planner for the last four or five months. Many of you may know that the village's previous planner, Joe Hennertfind, left in the fall. The village contracted with Khan Savoy's agency for Khan to provide services, consultant services to us basically since last fall. He was here when I started in November, and so he's helped me transition in as the new head of the community development department. He's been very helpful to me, and I've very much appreciated his assistance. His contract with the village ends at the end of this month, so more than likely, this will be the last meeting at which he attends.
All right, so I just--
Thank you.
By that, I wanted to thank the commission and express, as I've expressed to Bruce and other staff within the department and everyone else I could talk to, how welcomed I felt when I came here, how enjoyable it's been. I think you have a great community, a great staff, and I just wish you all the best in the end of ever, but I very, very much enjoyed the opportunity, meeting you, working with you, and obviously look for other opportunities in the future.
Thank you, Khan, too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All righty. Anything else, commissioners? All righty, just to recap, next meeting is Wednesday, April 10th, and if you're looking way ahead, not so much for this, but for our planning, May 8th will be the meeting to follow after that, always the second Wednesday of each month, and agendas for this and every other village item are always published on the village of website, village's website. All righty, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Sharp. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned.